By way of introductions, my name is Matt Kamkar and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I'd like to call the order, call to order the meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Majewski?
Present.
Commissioner Scissor?
Yeah.
Commissioner Strasky? Sir? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Pastor Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Second?
You have a motion and a second?
Commissioner, Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Scissor?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Pastor Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we move on to communications and agendas. Victor Eastwood, do you have any communications or agenda modification?
Chair Kamkar, Commissioners, you do have the one communication that came in yesterday that was emailed to you. We have no further communications. No agenda modifications or postponements. We do have quite a number in the audience tonight. If you'd like to change the order, to your discretion you may, but nothing additional from staff.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, before we go through the agenda, I guess agenda modification is next. So how many of you are here for the Campbell Technology item? Okay, so it looks like almost everybody. And how many are here for the Home Depot? Do a quick poll, two people, okay? And I guess we have a, we have another item, which is a single-family residence. How many are for that, for single-family residence? Is there anyone online for the single-family residence?
Can I, can I maybe make a suggestion? I don't know if it's the right suggestion. So I'm guessing the the Campbell Technology Park is going to be longer than the Home Depot one.
Absolutely.
I don't know if the other Commissioners agree. So I would, I would suggest we move Home Depot up to get, so that they don't have to wait on that. If it's going to be relatively short compared to the Campbell Technology item. But I don't know if other Commissioners agree on that.
So what do other Commissioners say? Good idea? Good idea. Commissioner Majewski?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so why don't we switch? Item three and four with each other. Item two, which is the Virginia Court, the Saturn Architectural Review Committee, that one's probably going to be a quick one. So we're going to get that one out of the way first. Okay, oral communication, this portion of the meeting is reserved, is reserved for individuals wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters of community concern that are not listed on the agenda. In the interest of time, and we limit the speaker's time to five minutes. Please be aware that state law prohibits the Commission from acting on non-agendized items. However, the Chair may refer matters to the staff for follow-up. Having said that, is there anyone who likes to address the Commission on a non-agendized item? Seeing none in the audience, anyone in the? No? Okay. So there's none. I'm going to go through disclosures immediately. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our agendas. Is there any disclosures as to as to have you visited the site or have you had contact with the applicant or any, anyone involved?
Yeah, I drove by.
Which, which project?
The, the Campbell Technology site. I drove by and actually through the site recently to, to take another look at it. I, I also drove into Home Depot and took a look at the building and the size of the building.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I visited the Campbell Technology Park site and I drove through the, the parking lot there.
Home Depot, okay. Wait, the parking lot of Home Depot or the Campbell Technology Park?
The Campbell Technology Park.
Thank you.
I regularly visit the Home Depot and I regularly take my kid to Edith Morley Park, which is right across from the tech park. So I'm in both places pretty frequently.
From you, thank you for that.
And I did visit all three of our sites.
I've visited, I've been to Edith Morley with my children and I actually went to Home Depot and I walked around the whole building.
Wow.
And saw the back, nobody was there.
Got your workout.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
But I did not visit the first site.
Good, thank you. I have visited both the Campbell Technology Park as well as the Home Depot as well. I didn't walk it, I drove it. Got a dirty look, but there was no, no entrance signs. Okay, so with that, let's go to agenda item number one. I'm sorry, item number two, which is the eight-ten Virginia Court, Site and Architectural Review Permit. This is a public hearing to consider the application of N.A.L.E. to allow the demolition of an existing sixteen-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet single-family home and the construction of a new thirty-three-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-three square foot single-family home, including the attached garage and hundred-and-eighty-six-foot front porch on property located at eight-ten Virginia Court. The application under consideration is the Site and Architectural Review Permit, file number two-zero-two-four-dash-one-one-zero-four. Staff, staff, why don't you take over? Thank you, Nishan.
This project is located at eight-ten Virginia Court, along the south side of Virginia Court, between Virginia Avenue and Teresa Avenue. It's an eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-square-foot R-one-eight lot, the Santa Mas area neighborhood plan. Site is currently developed with a one-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-one-square-foot home that will be demolished. The applicant is proposing to build a new three-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-three-square-foot home with attached garage and hundred-and-seventy-three-square-foot front porch. Project conforms with all setback F.A.R. lot coverage and height standards. The design of the home is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It will include a hit concrete tile, low-sloped roof, stucco siding and stone bases for porch pillars in the front of the house. The S.A.R.C. reviewed the project on December tenth, twenty twenty-four and recommended approval. Project is not removing any trees, keeping four onsite and planted thirteen for a total of seventeen. The home is consistent with height and story standards and window size and distribution is similar to surrounding homes. In combination with the second floor east-facing balcony screened by solid wall, privacy impacts will be minimal. Staff did receive two comments regarding concerns about privacy and neighborhood compatibility in response to the initial home's design and home size and distance from site property lines. Those comments were in response to the initial design, which had to change because the project was not conforming with setback requirements. After that redesign, the home's footprint was reduced, as was the distance from the site property. Staff explained this to neighbors and committed residents and didn't receive any responses. Staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Questions from the Commissioners?
Do you want to do the?
I'm sorry.
Stark?
Yes, please.
Well, it's, it's you.
Well.
I could do it.
Yes, you could.
Uh, this was a straightforward application. They had done some extensive work to modify the permit based on the feedback they had gotten. And the revised design met every objective standard we're allowed to weigh in on. And our discussion was brief, that we were supportive of the project.
That's right, you know, and my recollections are, it was pretty straightforward. They met, you know, all the conditions and, you know, didn't see any issues with it. Okay, so with that, any questions for the staff? Commissioner Buckbinder?
Thank you. In terms of, we talked about how the city had, the city's discretion in terms of single-family houses has changed due to S.B. four-fifty's situation where it's an objective sort of ministerial thing and we're only, this is only an item here because we haven't updated our code yet.
So we haven't updated the code with this project, came in before that.
Okay, so if the project came in now, it wouldn't?
It's in the report.
Okay. Just making sure I'm on the same page, yes. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. I just, I'm just curious, out of curiosity, so I guess the applicant had reduced the size in relation to the neighbors' concerns, as you mentioned, but I guess that was before the S.A.R.C. meeting. So you know about how much they reduced the size by?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but it wasn't in response to the neighbor's comments. They just were not conforming with the setback requirements.
Oh, so it was in response to the city staff recommendation, okay. Okay.
But in correcting that, they also addressed.
That's not, it didn't lower, reduce the size of the front porch very slightly. Thank you.
Well, believe it or not, I have no question.
Thank you. Oh, Corey. Commissioner Majewski, do you have any questions for the staff?
I have no questions for staff, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
No, no questions, no questions.
And I don't either, and I believe in the conversation with Director, there's probably two or three other projects like this and then, you know, we don't. You know, it becomes a truly ministerial. I don't have any questions, thank you. So with that, I will open it to the public. Are there anybody in public that wish to speak or online? None? I won't open it. If there's no questions, is there a motion to?
No, you got it. Yeah, I can add it.
Applicants?
Ask for the applicant and then comments from the Commission.
That's right, thank you. I appreciate it, yes. Is there, is the applicant here? Does? Oh, they're online, okay. Does the applicant wish to speak? They haven't raised their hand? They don't have to speak if they don't account with them, right? Okay? So with that?
You can close the public comment.
Close the public comment? Okay, so is there any other discussions?
Well, I, I'll just, you know, I'll just say that, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of the project. The, the one, I believe the one neighbor comment was about the concern about it being a two-story in, in what is primarily a, a street that has only one stories on it. But I, I just feel like we need to, this always, this comes up quite often and I think it's always useful to kind of educate the public that, that I've been, I've been living in Campbell for forty-five years in a number of places. And over the last three to four decades, the, what was mostly single-family homes that were single-stories have, have now gone to two-story places in, in most, if not all neighborhoods. So this is a common occurrence. It's pre-standard to see people either replacing their homes with a two-story home or adding on a second story. And so I think those that maybe don't really understand the nature of what's been going on in Campbell, I, you know, thi- this particular street, I think you have to go down to the end of the street and around the corner to find a two-story. But, but it's probably an anomaly for the most part in terms of Campbell neighborhoods now where there's plenty of two-story homes mixed in with one story. So I, I certainly understand the concern of, of the neighbor, but this is pretty much kind of standard operating procedure in, in the city now in single-family home neighborhoods. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we said Campbell Planning Commission approved a Site and Architectural Review Permit to allow construction of a new three-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-three-square-foot single-family home, including attached garage and hundred-and-seventy-three-square-foot front porch on property located at eight-ten Virginia Court, P.L.N. twenty-twenty-four-dash-one-zero-four.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second? If we could get a voice, voice call.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Scissor?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Aye.
Pastor Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkar?
Aye.
Okay, so that closes unanimously, that passes unanimously. And I guess we will, we will want to the next item. There's no appeal announcement on this one, right? Just want to make sure. There's no appeal, okay. Thank you. Next item is the Home Depot item. And this is public hearing to consider the application of Scott A. Mommer Consulting to modify the operational characteristics of an existing one-hundred-and-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two square-foot hardware store with an eighteen-thousand-seven-zero-five square-foot garden center, the Home Depot, including legalization, legalizing existing unpermitted outdoor merchandise storage and adding additional outdoor merchandise storage areas on property located at four-eighty East Hamilton Avenue. The application under consideration is a major planned development permit modification, file number P.L.N. twenty-twenty-three-dash-fifty-two. Staff?
This project site is located southwest of East Hamilton Avenue and Salmar Avenue intersection. It's comprised of one ten-acre lot for the hardware store and garden center and one two-acre lot for the parking lot. Zone planned development with a general commercial land use designation and is currently developed with approximately one-hundred-two-thousand-square-foot store and eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot garden center, as well as the parking lot and an outdoor food cart use in front of the store. We'll go over some background first on this project. The S.O.R. was approved in nineteen ninety-one with a planned development permit and there are five other previously approved entitlements on this site. Those entitlements all attempted to resolve some of the same issues that this project will be resolving. That over the years has resulted in overlapping and conflicting approvals and conditions of approval, which is creating a lot of confusion about what is and isn't allowed, is part of why some of these issues have persisted. City has also received complaints from residents about nuisance impacts and has issued a code violation for after-hours noise and unpermitted outdoor storage. As a result of that, Home Depot entered into a compliance agreement with the city that required submitting of this application to modify operations and address the violations. So again, the code violation was regarding after-hours noise and unpermitted outdoor storage, including along the western property line. This is an image from the city code violation documentation showing some of that storage. There's also an ongoing violation regarding trash buildup on the site that is being processed by the West Valley Clean Water. This hasn't been resolved yet and at some point will be referred to the city for follow-up. Neighbors have expressed concerns about a variety of issues described in the report and it's summarized here on this slide. Staff has also held a community outreach meeting with neighbors, the applicant and Home Depot in January of last year. Neighbors were able to inform staff and Home Depot about the issues they were dealing with and this heavily informed the conditions that we are recommend. The applicant is requesting a voluntary major planned development permit modification to address the code violations and modify operations. Additionally, staff is recommending new conditions that will establish clear operational standards. If the project is approved, conditions for all existing entitlements will be replaced with these new conditions. One thing to note is that under the current code, outdoor storage is prohibited on the site, but under the code, in effect when the application was deemed to complete, outdoor storage was permitted with approval of an entitlement such as this one. So storage will only be allowed with approval of the entitlement. This is the site plan, there's a lot of information, so I'll break it down piece by piece. Start with existing conditions. Home Depot is currently storing merchandise south of the garden center in Ukraine. This is not permitted, it needs to be legalized with this entitlement. There's also periodically been storage along the western property line, that was one of the reasons for the code violation. This will not be permitted and is not part of the applicant's request. These are new outdoor storage locations that Home Depot is proposing in red, or the south, at the very back of the store, south of the garden center, and then along the eastern property line in the parking lot. Talk about that location a little bit more in a second. This is the proposed delivery truck access to the site. Trucks will be allowed to enter and exit from Salmar Avenue only and can only use the western property line for exiting the site. It can't be used for delivery vehicle access, can be used for emergency vehicle access. Lastly, there is an existing permitted food cart use in front of the store. This will remain, but all other outdoor merchandise sale will be prohibited. In addition to the applicant's proposal, staff will recommend conditions guiding the operation of the site. This is discussed in more detail in the report. Some of it summarized here, go over that more in detail if needed. Do you want to highlight one condition, condition twelve? The proposed storage along the southeastern parking lot I mentioned earlier will be partially visible from Salmar Avenue. Outdoor storage is required to be screened, but there is no screening current proposed. So staff is recommending a condition that requires compliance screening in this location. If screening is not feasible, storage in that location will not. End of my presentation, staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Stark? Yes, please, if you could, please, yes, please.
Yeah, so our Site and Architectural Review Committee of the Plan Commission met on October twenty-second for this item. We really got a good discussion, Commissioner Kamkar and myself. There were three neighbors and the two members of Home Depot attended online and obviously there were a lot of issues with this and, and it was a pretty long discussion and there's a lot of items and, but I think basically, and I, I could be corrected by some of the residents here if they're going to speak, but I think basically that the, that the homeowners nearby in the city were kind of on board with all the, all the changes that were recommended. And that the neighbors were also okay with it. And I think what, what the issue has been, and correct me if I'm wrong or shot, but really it's kind of an enforcement and, and not complying with the condition. So I think basically that the conditions are agreeable to everybody in the city and the neighbors. And it's just a question of will Home Depot follow up on them and they say that they will, of course, and that's kind of a, that's kind of my take from that, from that meeting, Matt. I know if you have, Commissioner Kamkar, if you have other points?
I, you know, I don't have as good of the recollection, recollection of the meeting being four months ago as to the details, but I do remember the, some of the discussions was regarding what outdoor storage issue, the noise and then the congregation of some of the employees on site, where, you know, they were, you know, I don't know if it was smoking or it was the congregation that, you know, was, was that happening?
And there was also the, the issue of people in the parking lot, right? And but then, but the police, it was a question of what the police could do and can't do and it's, we can discuss that, I guess, all of us if we want. It was pretty involved.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a S.A.R.C. report, any questions from the Commissioners? Why don't we start from your side?
Okay. So you know, the, it looks to me that, that the conditions, I'll be interested to hear from the residents and whether or not they feel comfortable with, with the plan here. There, there were some issues about day laborers, about a food cart on the street in front of, on Hamilton. And I, I, I don't think that either these are included in the resolution, but it's my impression that there's some question about whether or not there's actually anything that can be done about, about the day laborers. Is, is the resolution include anything about the day laborers being in a particular area or has that been left out?
It, it doesn't, can my counsel expand on it more about the nexus, whether the city can enforce that? Regarding the food cart use, there is a food cart in the front of the store that is existing and permitted, that will continue to be allowed. We do have a condition prohibiting any other outdoor merchandise sale, so maybe else?
But, yeah, this brings up something I've always wondered about because I drive around and I see food carts on public sidewalks on occasion. And so I guess there was a food cart on the public sidewalk in, on Hamilton in front of Home Depot. What is the legality issues associated with that?
So that's actually something I'm not a hundred percent familiar with, but, oh, my apologies. That's not something I'm a hundred percent familiar with, but I can tell you that there's, the city should have a sidewalk vendor ordinance with certain locations of where vendors can be. And if it's on private property, that's up to the private property owner to make a complaint and the police can't just come onto private property and detain somebody. It's the private property, the, the owner who needs to say something.
Okay, do we know if we have a, do we have a city code about, about food vendors on sidewalks?
It's, the ordinances we have in place are a bit old. City Council's Attorney's Office has prepared a draft ordinance. We are preparing to bring this to council sometime in the next two or three months.
Okay. And I'm in the impression that Home Depot is not concerned about the day laborers on their property, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that seems to be the case.
Okay. The only other thing I think was that I think on the west side, there's a requirement not that they have to, when they're moving, I, I'm in the impression that one of the problems was that, that they want to move, well, I guess, I guess because there's no storage on the west side anymore, then the issue of them moving something into the, into the, inside is not an issue anymore because they were, I guess they were taking it and driving it around to the other side and then moving it into the, in, inside the store. But that would not be an issue anymore since there's no storage on the west side, is that correct?
Correct, no storage and no loading vehicles, those vehicles can't stop there, they just use it.
Okay, so they have, they have to go to the south side or the west side to unload?
The loading area is actually on the east side, so that's where they'll.
I mean, the east side, yes.
So they'll, they'll unload there and then in the storage locations that we highlighted, so they can move the merchandise.
Right. Okay, so I visited yesterday and the entire west side was clear and there was no, nothing going on there and there wasn't any storage. So I guess they're already starting to follow this, right? That's all I have. All I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Majewski, do you have any questions?
Yes, I may have missed it and this may be a better question for the applicant, but I'm wondering how we are ensuring that the storage areas are staying to the, you know, what is said in the, the plans as far as dimensions? So is there going to be paint outlining those areas or how is that going to be enforced?
The storage areas will be striped and the applicant will need to apply for a building permit for all of the outdoor storage locations. So that'll be a second point at which we can check where they're going to be, but they, they do need to be physically striped.
Understood, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to see what the residents have to say, but that's all my questions for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Buckbinder, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for the, the presentation. I think this covers any questions I had, especially about the day laborer situation.
Commissioner Gray?
Yeah, Nishan, I think this came up in our starting meeting, but I can't remember. Are there any other stores at Campbell that have outdoor storage?
As far as I'm aware, no hardware stores. There are some junkyards and kind of automotive repair related uses.
Oh, sure.
Some of those are permitted by entitlement, some of them that storage before restrictions were put in place. They're existing non-referring uses.
Okay, and then in terms of day laborers or the parking lot or becoming a nuisance, like, so I just, I want to ask if I got it right. So the police can't actually do something? so I just want to ask if I got it right. So the police can't actually do something on their own, but this Home Depot could call and police can respond to a nuisance.
Correct. So this is a standard condition, but we've also placed it on, on this project. The operator will be required to make sure no one is trespassing or loitering on site. And if they are, they're required to report that to the police department. That's kind of how the process goes.
And have there been, do you know, I think, do you know, have there been any complaints by Home Depot to the police?
About day laborers specifically? No, we did have, we saw a look at that. There's been a history of things about theft and like that, nothing specific.
Nothing for the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Question? The outdoor merchandising part, like just specifically, does that mean they have like vegetation now? There's barbecues, there's sheds, like they can't do any of that in front of the store? Like what, what are they allowed to do in front of the store?
There is an existing merchandise display area in front of the store that is, that is permitted. What's not permitted is keeping that merchandise in the walkway. It's one of the issues that we've had. So that's going to be corrected. There's a condition that there is a strip where they can keep some merchandise out.
Okay, because I think the plants do sort of go into the walkway more maybe than the barbecues.
It's been kind of all of it, but yeah.
Okay.
So, so I, I was curious, I, I guess I interpreted it in certain ways like the fact that you can't, other than the food thing, you can't sell anything outside. So you could have this, the, you can have the merchandise outside, but I'm guessing it's like you can't have a register outside where you would actually, where you actually, you know, take the, take the order and finish the, finish selling it outside. So I think that's was my interpretation of what is not allowed. Since they do have, and have had for years, all the plants and the barbecues are out there for viewing, but you got to go inside to buy it.
But I was, I was questioning like, is any of that going away or?
Yeah.
And then just for our edification, if, if the general public, like the enforcement of this is the expectation that like code enforcement is going to check in on this any more regularly than before? Like, how, how are we sort of vetting this given the long history here?
There are two mechanisms. People can report issues to code enforcement and that's how this code violation came about. But we also have a condition requiring that twelve months from approval, the applicant needs to come back to planning commission for essentially compliance. So staff and planning commission will assess whether Home Depot is actually complying with the conditions additional conditions need to be placed or additional restrictions.
And who's preparing that report?
Staff would. So the applicant would, would submit a fee in the application for zoning clearance.
Okay.
We bring it to the commission.
Right. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. On my visit, I saw some, I guess some fruit sales, you know, that was occurring, you know, and you know, which was not associated with Home Depot, but it was on their property. So I guess they will have to make a complaint if, if they're not okay with it.
Correct. And the condition prohibiting outdoor merchandise sale, that can't be. And the operator would be responsible for pushing that.
Okay, thank you for that. No more questions for the staff. I guess next we can open it to the applicant. Does applicant wish to speak? Online or?
Yeah.
Okay, Cassandra, did you wish to address the commission and the public?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to say that we have reviewed the conditions of approval. I have reviewed them with Home Depot team and staff as well and that they are in agreeance to the conditions of approval. So we don't have any issues with those. So I just wanted to say that we agree and that we are good to move forward with them.
Wonderful. I'm sorry, I didn't, can you please identify yourself, which firm you're with and?
Yes. Yes, my name is Cassandra Permenter and I am with Scott A. Mommer Consulting.
One, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So any questions for Cassandra, commission? Hearing none. I guess we can open it to the public. Are there any speakers here? We have two.
We have one, two, three, four, five chair.
Okay, so if you could please call them in the order you received them. Thank you. And Sosa, Sosa?
I'm actually for the technology.
Okay. I'll listen to that. Mary Ann Hoshikawa? Wonderful. So when you get here, please identify yourself and you have two minutes.
Good evening, first chair.
Can you touch the red little speakers?
Good evening, commissioners.
Welcome.
Chair, staff. My name's Mary Ann Yoshi Kawa. I'm at three thirty Harrison Avenue in Campbell. And I just wanted to share our, well, I'll just speak for myself that, you know, Home Depot has not been a good neighbor, so I tend to disagree with the consulting firm. And I also disagree with the recommendation of staff to approve their, the permit that they've applied for. There's a number of different reasons. They don't adhere to the operating hours. They're a nuisance to the adjacent homes. They are moving material, you know, they're storing material illegally. They're moving it during times when they've committed to not have any forklift movement, you know, noise, et cetera, including on Sundays, which there's supposed to be zero. They, they don't put any effort towards keeping day laborers off the property, not because people don't, you know, day laborers are a good thing, but they're illegal in, not in immigration status at all. They are against code, you know, being that close to the freeway on ramp. We've dealt with the day labor, day labor issue for twenty years or more. And, you know, that was one of the issues that, where we finally got some clarity around the code and the code being enforced was that there is a certain number of feet, you know, within the freeway on ramp. Home Depot property falls within that, so they are not allowed to be there. So they loiter, litter, come into our, our neighborhood as well. And again, we can make, we can make as many calls to a blow in the face to the store manager. Typically, we don't hear, hear anything else. So again, I'm very, very vehemently opposed to the staff recommendation to grant that. If they can prove that they could be a good neighbor for maybe a year and come back in a year, you know, maybe they can meet all the conditions that you're asking them to meet this time. If they can just do that and illustrate that they're capable, because they have not done that in the past. So I would be more than happy to reconsider that and, and be fair about that, but they need to show good faith. Thanks.
Can I ask Mary Ann a question? Hi, it's nice to see you. I know Mary Ann from the CIC. So, you know, your, your point is well taken. I guess the question I have is, is there anything more that you would like the resolution to include? That we don't include now? I mean, you're saying you're willing to, to, to see if it will work. Is, are there portions of the resolution that you feel are in, in, not enough to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish?
Well, if there's, it doesn't appear that there's anything in the, in the resolution for maintaining the propriety of, like, you know, enforcing, like calling the police out if, if there's trespassers, calling the police out if there's vendors illegally selling things. There's, I don't think there's anything in it regarding like enforcement of the, the legal, the legality points of it, right? As a private property owner, like I can't expect anyone to do anything if I don't call the police when I have a burglar or a trespasser or somebody, you know, vandalizing, et cetera. So I would expect them to do the same.
Yeah. So, so you live on Harrison, so you're just across, your, your yard's on that side?
Yes.
You're on that side?
Yeah, we're on the east side of Harrison Avenue, or I am on the east side of Harrison Avenue. So our backyard directly backs up to the western side of Home Depot. And I will tell you, there is merchandise back there from time to time. There may not be yesterday, considering they have a hearing tonight. But there is merchandise out there from time to time and there's, they're operating things.
What are you seeing on Harrison with regards to day laborers or, or others that are, you're uncomfortable with?
I haven't seen anything on Harrison recently, but if I do go into Home Depot, you know, there's a lot of loitering, trash. The day laborers tend to walk down to Rotten Robbie, loiter there as well. Sometimes I'll see them in the parking lot of Home Depot with twelve pack of beer, which none of my business if they want to drink, but I just kind of feel like if you're looking for work at that morning, that's great. If you get picked up, great. But if you're there and it's three o'clock, you know, later in the day and you're just sitting there with, with, you know, your buddies drinking, I don't know if that's such a good feel for the neighborhood.
Okay.
For the business.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I'm, I'm in agreement with if they can do those things. I'm saying I'm, I'm in agreement if you would like to say, hey, why don't you try working this out? And then we'll provide the approval. I'm definitely not an approval, I'm not in agreement with giving them the approval and then saying, and, and in a year, let's see how well they comply. I'm in, I'm in agreement with saying, hey, prove to the neighbors you can be a good neighbor. And then come back in a year after you've been a good neighbor and reapply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks.
Next. Scott Reese?
Good evening. Hi commissioners and staff. My name's Scott Reese. I live at three thirty Harrison. I had something written, but I'm just, the problem that I think a lot of us have with Home Depot is there were guidelines set forth and they've never really abided by them. And now we're basically saying like, it, it's nice that they're trying to work with us and do stuff, but they are kind of like a little kid that you tell to go clean the room. It gets cleaned, but two days later, the palms are back. It's dirty again. And Home Depot has continuously broken the rules by going out back, by storing stuff out there, by having their people meet back there and smoke or do whatever. So they're not ever proven to work with us or to try and be good. So kind of like what Mary Ann said, make them prove that they can actually be good before you give it to them and then revisit this. That's, that's kind of the gist of what I'm getting at. And, and I'm going to read a little bit of what I wrote. I'm just kind of shocked that you guys would recommend this for approval. I understand that they've changed the scope of it and how it's looking, but they have no history of ever working with us or working within the city and abiding by those rules that were already set forth for them. So now we're just going to let those rules kind of be passed into law for them. We've already talked about the day laborers and selling the fruit and stuff like that. What scares me is it kind of gives a precedent now for other places to ask for modifications to their rules as well. And not just Home Depot, but other places. So if we're going to do it for them, other places are going to start asking. And I don't think it's right to, to set that precedent just because they're the big vendor in town or a big vendor in town. It's a big site. I think there's a lot of stuff that's not being used properly out there. You've got the front side of the parking lot on, on Hamilton and you've got the stuff over on Salmar. It's not being used properly. Why do they have to come to the western side or even that backside of all the storages? They could do things out there. They could re-modify their location. They're just not, they, they want what they want because it's the least affect, it's the least affecting them the least. And so I would rather table this for a year, like, like she has said, have them come up with a better plan that works for everyone, because right now it doesn't work for the residents. And we've been there quite a long time as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Big and so can I ask you a question? Pretty quick before you go, I could have asked any of the speakers, but I, because I know Nishant has been, our city planner's been working on this for a good, good year. And was it there, wasn't there, maybe this question finished now, but wasn't there a Home Depot, didn't they have to have a meeting with the local property owners, homeowners? Wasn't there some kind of meeting maybe about a year ago, eight months ago?
About a year ago, yeah. We held a meeting between staff, neighbors, the applicant and.
And, and the neighbors who were able to attend that meeting?
No, I wasn't, I actually wasn't notified about that. But my, my point is, they sit there and say, yeah, we'll do good, and then they revert back to their old ways. And they have a history of doing that because they don't comply. You guys even stated, they've been in violation of a lot of the storage rules for years. So why would we allow them to do it now? You're essentially saying, we're going to absolve you guys of those storage violations that you guys have had for years and let you guys do it now. And what's, and really who's going to police this? The city's not because it's private property. They're not going to police themselves. They've, they've showed zero effort to ever police themselves. And I'm sure there's probably a record of at least thirty calls from the neighborhood to the city to come out and do something. And I hate to say it, your code enforcement doesn't do anything. There's a history of that as well, and I'm sure there's some people that will get up after me and talk about that. So we're a lot, we're allowing someone to, to say, I promised to do this, but their fingers are crossed behind their back. I, I just, I, make them prove it first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Patrick Todd?
Good evening. Good evening. Name's Patrick Todd. I live at three six two Harrison Avenue. Basically my backyard, but it's Home Depot on the western side, so. Kind of following up and not just continually hammer home the point that Scott and Mary Ann have already spoke about. You know, the one point is that it's the same story. We hear all the time, people complain, they clean up their act. Oh, it's all good and it goes back. So that's the continual story that we hear. But I have a few other things, just going through the, the conditions of approval. I just want to get clarification on. There is a, there is an item in there, I think it's nine E, talks about Sunday delivery hours. And the previous conditions had no Sunday delivery hours on the east side, no trucks, no anything. Now there's up to ten during the spring and certain events or holidays or whatever. So I find that, kind of getting that in there is kind of, you know, we're sliding something else in there now, now that we're allowing to do that. So take exception to that. There's items in there about parking lot cleanup time between certain hours up to eleven P M. They're out there in the middle of the night cleaning up the, the parking lot. There's streets weeper comes out there and makes that noise. So that continues to be ongoing. And then the other question is on deliveries, only exiting vehicles. That means no forklifts, no other vehicles, none of that stuff. And we, in the least when we're out there in the springtime, summertime, we hear forklifts running back there and other trucks. So saying that that's the new rule and we're going to have to hold them to it, so that's the expectation. So that's what's written in here, but in the past forklifts, I don't know if that's been in part of their conditions of approval or not previously, but we've heard forklifts, guys hanging out back there and other trucks. So just want to get clarification on that. And then there are a couple of other items that we talked about, but they're not really on the conditions or may have, I missed them. The outdoor kind of break smoking area is on the west side, sitting below all these redwood trees. Significantly amount of cigarette butts in a container and how sensitive we are to fires. That's a big red flag right there. My recommendation was probably put them in a different spot, you know. Could be, could be a bigger issue in the long term. The other thing is all the lumber, storage, flammable materials on the property line. I'm not sure how the city's handling that from a fire standpoint. It's all flammable material, so it's sitting right on the property line. So adjacent neighbors are maybe more susceptible to potential issue there. So I'm not sure how the city's addressing that, even on the fire side. I don't know if they have comments on that. And then the other item, there are some trees, redwood trees that run along the west side that are for screening. Not necessarily right behind my property, but one property over. There have been trees that have been missing that haven't been replaced. And when they replace them, they continually die, so they start to grow and they die. So there's something going on there, but there's currently one missing. So I think that needs to be upheld too. I don't know that that's in the condition either, but that's an item that's outstanding, outstanding as well. So, so those are some of the things I saw in the document. I'm online with my neighbors, Scott, Mary Ann, you'll hear it from other people about the continual problem. I've lived there for twenty five years. I'm online with my neighbors, Scott, Mary Ann, you'll hear it from other people about the continual problem, I've lived there for twenty-five years. I'm probably one of the first residents that met with the their lawyers at one point early on to amend some of these. Conditions of approval because of the noise issues, and you can see twenty-five years later, we're still talking about this stuff, so. You know, I'm hopeful, but at the same time skeptical that this is not going to be an ongoing decision, uh, situation, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Next, Matt Shepherd.
Evening. Hello, some of you I've met before, Matt Shepherd at three ten Harrison Avenue, and uh, what they said. But I think I'll I'll choose to um, focus on a couple of areas, number one is the enforcement of code. So um, in the past, the neighbors had been told by the city that we need to call the police. Right, so if we see something that is out of compliance, we call the police. Uh, because code enforcement only works certain hours and they're not like on a beat where they're walking around, they need to be called. And kind of informed of the issue, and then it's not like they don't do anything, obviously there's record of some fines. But it's uh, just a stone's throw compared to the amount of complaints. Um, I mean, I complained, at one point I just stopped because I tired of taking the police's time, they're here for hopefully something more important. Than uh, code enforcement, code enforcement's important, but I wouldn't think if I'm a police officer, that's what I signed up for. Um, and as the neighbors, you know, I actually have had somebody come across the property onto the roof of my house. Somebody was asking, have you ever had any impacts from the day laborers? Uh, this wasn't a day laborer, but it was somebody that came across, walked up the pallets, climbed along the fence and then came onto the roof of our property. So I called the police out for that. Um, the second thing I'd like to address is the comments around, um, they've been storing stuff out in the front for years. And yeah, they have, but if you read through, that's not permitted, right, I I worked there, I actually opened the store as a college grad. And we brought it in every night because we weren't allowed to have a bazaar out on the sidewalk. So they're not doing commerce, they're not selling things out there, but there's stacks and stacks and stacks of stuff. And a lot of times up high enough that if it fell, it would crush you. And that's not permitted, like that's supposed to be for fire and egress and uh, wheelchairs and other. Things other than storage. Um, so I'd like you to revisit, like permitting them, like everybody said. Uh, they've been breaking the rules, now we're gonna adjust the rules so that they can do what they want and it's not, no longer breaking the rules. I'd like to go back and show uh, some demonstration of compliance to the existing rules. And then we can revisit, because really, this is Home Depot benefiting. Uh, the neighbors are not benefiting at all, but what's in it for us? Uh, just more pain and more um, nuisance and potentially long-term property value damage. Um, so I'm against the current proposal, thank you.
Thank you. Phil Rollinson.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, I live at three one eight Harrison, my garden backs on to the west side also. Uh, I'm not gonna go over what the others have done, I share the same synthesis. Uh, I'd like to focus on the premise that you are gonna approve this, and so I'd like some clarification on points. Storage, um, the issue of storage can be interpreted in a number of ways. Is it clearly defined within it, or will it be clearly defined what storage can happen? Because you can store an item and then you can temporarily store it, which is leaving it there, it's a holding point until we move it again. My instinct is that if you give Home Depot an inch, they'll take a mile, um, that west side should have nothing on it. Not on, it was only there for ten minutes, only for fifteen minutes, it should have nothing on it, I want to make sure the agreement states that clearly. Two, and this is the one I think I I wasn't clear on. It isn't the case of deliveries only, that west side should not be used for the movement of goods. That are being stored on the south side or stored on the east side and brought around to the front. And that's what they do, and we talk about forklifts and whatever, the agreement should clearly state that it cannot be used as the movement of goods. Through the course of the day, they want to move goods, they move from the south side and they move it through the store and then they bring it to the front. They do not use that west side for anything. Now, I have no faith that Home Depot will abide by that. And so your ye- your yearly pass whereby we're gonna come back and have a look should be a look at, are they abide by these things or not? And I also think, oh, shall look at, does compliance come out, because I don't believe those two things will happen. Always say we've chatted at Home Depot, we've chatted to two consultants from Home Depot, yes, we met with a number of people from Home Depot. Asked them a number of questions and no decent answers provided. I'll give you an example on day laborers, we don't know what we can do with day laborers, uh, the lawyer was on the call, and I said, well, let's trespass for a start. Oh, yes, but the police have told us, they don't want us to do anything because they don't want to push it over to the streets, because then they have to deal with it. The police don't want Home Depot calling them, because then I have to deal with the problem. And so everyone just goes, okay, let's bury our head in the sand. This isn't a case of just dealing with things, um, and thinking, okay, everyone's gonna be hunky-dory, because it isn't. It's gonna get, we'll put it through you guys, and I know Nishant's put this in and he's done immense amount of work on this. But your year, years' time, you'll have us here arguing vociferously that then you should be rescinding the approvals you've given them. Uh, to do X, Y, and Z, because unless they come here and the store manager comes here and says. I will give you my word that I will do all these things, then all you're having is a consultant saying, we approve it, okay, I don't have to deal with it anymore. I think your your bad faith that has been shown in the past will be shown again in the future, unless we tie them down in such a legalistic way. That they are, they are absolutely held over the coals if they cause problems. My time is up, but I could speak for a lot longer.
Thank you. Uh, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
You're suggesting that they they can't even um. Uh, drive along the west side to to get to the south side.
I'm suggesting that was the assurance we were given in the borough's meetings, and I want to make sure that's absolutely clear and understood, um, so I'll ask, you can ask.
I'm not talking about the storage part, I'm talking about, you, it it sounded like you're suggesting that there should be no even drive through. Uh, it looks to me like there, you know, if you have a truck, there's only room. There's, there's, there's only room for the truck to just drive through and around. And that's apparently what they do to get to the south side to deliver, right? So are you suggesting that they shouldn't even do that?
No, I'm suggesting that truck can, uh, will deliver things and come around the west side and exit um, for Home Depot. What I'm telling you they'll do is then they'll take little forklifts and they'll take um, the stuff that they've stored on the south side. And they'll drive it up the west side so they put it out the front, where we've allowed to use Matt's phrase, the bazaar of things being done. There is a, there's a back gate, there's a back door which can be opened, and there's a front door can be opened, you can move all that stuff in inside the store. Now, Mount Pat can come back and talk about it again, but that's what it was meant for, and they don't do that. And irrespective of what Cassandra may say, they won't do it again in the future unless you force the issue. So I mean, I would, I welcome Nishant's due, because I'm sure, you and I discussed it before, and he said, they cannot even move those goods. And I want it clearly, made clearly uh, understood by Home Depot that that is not allowed, so if we hear a noise. We can be calling now on it, because they shouldn't even be there doing that. But they'll say, oh, well, that's unclear, we didn't know what you meant by storage, we didn't know what you meant by moving it up and down. You are dealing with people who will look at the, well, it's ambiguous, so we're gonna take, I was about to swear then, we're gonna be liberal in how we interpret the rules. Um, I, can I ask a question of the officer? Nishant, is, are they able to move their goods up and down that they've previously stored? In order to bring it from the back of the store to the front of the store using the west side?
No, the west side is only used, or the west side is only used for exiting.
Okay.
No, no merchandise.
And that, that is clearly understood there, and what I would suggest is, in addition to this, you have the aide memoir, the ten things you cannot do. And you put it everywhere, and you point it out to them, because whilst they refer to a large planning document, what they'll go is, oh, well, it's not clear. We had an excellent conversation whereby I was chatting with the store manager and his regional manager, the regional manager showed us a picture saying, here's what we're following. And it had no storage on the things, and I asked the manager, are you following that? He goes, no, no, we're not following that. And he said it to us in no uncertain terms in the, in the meeting, and um, uh, I think Nishant was part of that meeting. And we were left flabbergasted, it doesn't matter what you do, they'll do whatever they want to do. And unless you hold them um, in a really, really um, clear way. They will continue to go down that road, and the work the mission has done here is, is really good. Um, but I am less trusting, again, because you should have the store manager here giving you assurances. Not Cassandra from um, consultancy firm, I will do this, and I will come back once every two months or once every three months. And I assure you that we're still doing this, because they are not, they are not good actors once the approvals have been passed.
Okay, thank you very much, you've had plenty of time, any other questions for our speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Chair, I have no more speaker cards, but I do have somebody with their hands raised online. Yes, please. Vince Staub.
Thank you, Vince Staub, three seven two Harrison, I just want to bring everyone's attention back to the minutes of this board meeting. This commission meeting from uh, two thousand and seven, where the same issues were talked about, where Home Depot was not a good ne- neighbor. Promised to be a good neighbor, refused to be a good neighbor, they were gonna hire security guards, they're gonna put up a perimeter fence, they were gonna do all kinds of things. That they never did, so you can go back to your own notes, your own minutes and look at what was going on in two thousand and seven. So it's not like we're making this stuff up and we're, you know, we're getting a bee in our bonnet. It's history for us, we should not have to be in the business of policing Home Depot. They should be policing themselves. That's it, I yield back, thank you.
Thank you. I do have the applicant with their hand raised as well. Yes, thank you.
Hello, um, I just wanted to chime in on just a couple of points. Um, so throughout the conditions of approval, there are timelines put in place for us to um, reach back out to the city. And show evidence of what has been implemented, um, so some of the things are no loitering signs. We have to show them the striping, all of this stuff needs to be completed within sixty days, um, so that is in the conditions of approval. And that is something that we have agreed to. Um, previously, as noted in Nishant's report, there have been multiple entitlements done on this site. With multiple lists of conditions of approval, so one of the reasons we are doing this is to consolidate everything. And to make sure everything is clear for the store team. Um, the smoking area has been relocated, that is included within the conditions of approval, so that will not be close to the neighboring properties. Um, loitering has also been highlighted in the condition of approval that the store manager needs to take care of it, Home Depot will be responsible. And it has to be the ones reporting this to the police and kicking them off the property. Um, and lastly, as far as being a consultant, our team has been a consultant with Home Depot for over twenty-five years. Um, we have worked with Home Depot on many projects, so we are not the type of consultant that just helps once and then leaves. We have been on this project, we have worked on this project before, um, so we have had a relationship with Home Depot for a very long time. It is not our intention to just leave the project and then hang them out to dry, essentially. Um, it is my understanding also that the neighbors have already gone to Home Depot and introduced themselves to the new store manager. So they have met the manager, the manager has talked to them, um, we have spoken with the manager as well, we have reviewed the conditions of approval. So she understands what will be expected from her and how to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can I ask you a question? Sure. Yeah, so I I noticed there, uh, the smoking area, uh, is this where the picnic tables are on the west side? Is is that the smoking area?
Yes, so, uh, originally, the neighbors brought that.
Are those gonna be removed?
Yes, so that was.
No smoking.
No, so that was part of the conditions of approval, so that the, the lunch area, like the break area, will not be anywhere close to. The western property line, so that is in the conditions of approval that no smoking, no loitering. No lunch breaks, no employee breaks, anything can happen on that west property line.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Is anyone from the store team here today? No.
Can I get a clarification on the um? He had the floor. That was your only question? So, so the, the exit, uh, um, you mentioned the, the requirement for just. Exiting on the, on the west side, I I'm not clear on that, I I'm not clear as to what that means. Is like, are they allowed to enter from the front and drive around? Go up, go down the west side and then drive around to the south side and then exit the east side? Or can they only enter for deliveries from the, from the east side? To go along the south side, de- deliver their goods on the east and south side and then just exit the west side?
So, trucks will only be allowed to enter from Samar Avenue on this entrance and this entrance. And they will either drive over here and come down or go straight here. Loading area will be right here, it's the only place that they can unload merchandise, and then they will exit down this way around the store. And then they'll have to come back out onto Samar.
Okay, so, so they're not able to come from the front and go uh, go along the west side towards the back?
No, and they can't exit from Hamilton.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Chair, we have two additional speakers, one in person and then one online, so Susan Mandrie. Yes.
Oh, you remember my name, great, hello, everybody, I think you guys all know who I am.
You look vaguely familiar. You look vaguely familiar.
I vaguely familiar, uh, one thing I haven't heard and I'm sorry I didn't read it, what are the cease and desist or violations? If they are in violation of these rules, can we shut them down and say, you can't keep operating this way till you improve? I, I didn't hear any discussion about that.
Thank you. Thank you for that, yeah, I I I I'm interested in the code violations and what's the repercussions. Exactly.
Can we, why don't we ask staff?
I I'm asking staff.
Sure, uh, so, as I mentioned earlier, there is a requirement that Home Depot, Home Depot comes in a year after approval. You check for compliance with these conditions and based on staff and the commission's assessment, if they are not complying with conditions. We have the ability to modify approval, what's allowed, what the conditions are, uh, based on the situation.
Can it happen sooner, I mean, like, we have a situation with restaurants where. Where if there's a lot of, a lot of calls into the police that uh, I guess it can happen at any time, so.
So two things added that, regardless of the conditions, you have the enforcement tools, and that does include progressive fines. Using any case, I do know, and I'm asking Nishant to pull out, there's an additional condition. And anytime if staff believes there's a egregious violation, we can schedule a revocation modification hearing back. So you don't have to wait all year, so both those tools, which are used in any case for warnings and progressive fines. And they're going to come back with a revocation hearing.
Correct, and I will add that the modification condition also allows the director to immediately restrict the hours of operation as well.
Are the fines gonna be material for Home Depot?
Uh, state law allows us to go up to a thousand dollars a day.
So no.
That, that's, that's cap.
I understand you didn't make the law, I just to clarify, thank you.
But you can adjust the hours, just like you do with restaurants.
Further condition, yeah, you'll remember there are other cases, we have ours recently where there's the option to immediately modify. And so we put that condition into as another punitive measure for the violation.
Okay, we have one more speaker online, let's go to that and then Commissioner Craig.
I'm questioning the same topic, nevermind.
Raj Palala.
Hey, um, this is Raj Palala, one two one six West Hussain Avenue. Um, just wanted to quickly, I mean, while I sympathize with the neighbors uh, on the noise and stuff. Um, trying to put access restrictions, um, my kids go there for their every week, uh, every month. You know, they hold the kid classes in the morning, every Sunday morning, uh, once a month. I do a lot of my home, Home Depot shopping there, so um. While putting restrictions, that will ease the pain of the neighbors, you know, excessive restrictions might cause. Um, you know. I don't, but if the Home Depot makes addition to move out or something like that, it's not a great thing, but everyone, so. Um, what, and I don't see a problem with storing on the east side, the extra storage and stuff, I see that happening at, you know, maybe Q Patino allows it. Uh, the San Jose one on Camden Avenue allows it and things like that, so. Um, while I sympathize with the neighbors, uh, I would like the planning commission to take an approach where it's workable for everyone. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, Commissioner Craig, you had a question?
Well, yeah, just on that, on the whole topic of compliance and how, how we follow up and this, I don't want to get too picky. this, I don't want to get too picky, but on this specific item, it, it, because it came up and I just wondered. So we say that, that there's a, Sunday deliveries are allowed for ten Sundays a year. Who would, who would possibly monitor that? That would just be ten Sundays? I don't want to ask an impossible question, but I mean, we've got those conditions in there, so who, who would actually monitor that?
I mean, we can't confirm that a hundred percent. Um, if we get some kind of notice from neighbors about noise or issues being generated on Sunday, we can contact the store and verify what's going on. That's not something that we can
Man, I'm recalling, I think in the past, in one example, we did require the business to provide us a list at the beginning of every year when they would exercise that provision.
That's what I was actually going to ask if they got it, say their ten Sundays, they probably don't know until later in the year, kind of the thing, so. I got you.
What's, what's the reasoning behind ten Sundays? Do we know, or can Cassandra tell us?
I, I can answer, uh.
Okay.
It's so that Home Depot has the flexibility to conduct seasonal sales. I think the timing of that is kind of variable and it's not predetermined, so having that ten Sundays gives us some flexibility to choose which days and which sales. It, it's meant for the purposes like memorial day weekend sales.
But it would be during operational hours, not like overnight.
Right.
The applicant's ready to speak as well.
Okay, applicant, um. Cassandra?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, did you wish to address the ten Sundays?
Uh, no, I think Nishant handled that, but yes, that is correct. So essentially, we would just kind of tailor that to around the busy seasons, wherein the seasonal sales is going, when Christmas trees are going, things like that. We would utilize those Sundays then and alert, we can alert the city and tell them when we're using a Sunday, if that is what the neighbors are looking for. Um, but that was, our plan was to just utilize those Sundays during busy season.
Got it. Okay, um, seeing no other questions? Yeah.
Commissioner Majewski?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Majewski, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hands up. Uh, did you have a comment? Question?
Uh, nope, I didn't have any questions for the moment.
Okay. Thank you, um. Okay, so we will close the public hearing, uh, the. No, no, no.
You can ask for additional, you can ask for additional speakers.
I think, yeah, I think, I think the, the public, you know, period is over. We're gonna take it up in the discussions. So close the public hearing, um, okay, uh, Commissioner Bookbinder, did you want to start?
So. The agreement looks reasonable. I, I'm glad staff was able to come to an agreement and so forth. And I understand that, like, neighbors may not see the whole picture and so forth, but it really sounds like people had a lot of complaints, flagrant code violations, and it took forever to get this handled. Uh, it sounds like a very bad experience. What happened and how are we confident this isn't going to happen again?
See, what happened, what a.
Like, why?
What can we do?
As in, why was, why were obvious code violations not cited or enforced? Apparently they were being reported, were they not being reported properly? Was staff?
Let me, let me start, and I mean, just for framing purpose. So generally, the reason that conditionally is permitted for you is to address code enforcement issues and stuff. Sure, uh, when we put in approach staff to say, hey, we'd like to expand our operations to more of it. The reason, the impetus for this is to respond to the multiple code enforcement violations. I think two, two full mind understand the history. One is there's been multiple approvals on the property. I know staff looking at them, sometimes they're conflicting and hazy. I think we've heard from the neighbors on what's allowed and not. And one of the opportunities here is to really clean up and draw clear lines on where they can and cannot store things, on the hours in which they can do things. It's been a lot more, it's a lot harder for code enforcement officers to enforce when the rules are hazy. So what we've put here, or what staff has put in here is, is basically much more clear lines on how they can operate, more clear lines on how the violations are addressed. I think broadly that the, what you'll see in the conditions, like asking Nishant to go through those is really to put more tools in the hands of the city to make sure these violations are addressed. I think it's just, that's been much easier for a code enforcement officer to address these, and as reported, if it's after hours, you have police out there and they have other priorities. So a lot of the tools that you're seeing here just allows the city to act probably more swiftly and with more clear direction if there are violations. I want to start with that frame, if there are specific questions on the conditions and the actions that will take place.
I'm, I'm more broadly asking how we got here. Uh, so if I understand you, you're saying that the problem isn't that people didn't report it properly, it's that our heading rules were not clear enough, so they weren't really enforceable.
I'd say they've been much easier and harder for code, for our code enforcement officers. And tools, speaking of our code enforcement officer, with the tools coming out of these conditions of approval, it would be much easier for him to enforce and for staff to execute enforcement actions.
Does the position of staff that, that it was not a problem with, who weren't trying to enforce this or something, and that fixing the rules so that they're clearer, will make it so these are, that um, code enforcement is much more responsible, uh, responsive to violations going forward, that is correct. Okay, I understand the position, thank you for bringing that up. That sounds reasonable.
Commissioner Craig?
Yeah, no, yeah. You know, another good discussion, obviously, it's a big issue. That's a, just a big story, you know, I think we've all been there so many times and, uh, I never realized until, uh, till this item came up at, at the site and architectural review committee, uh, you know, that the neighbors, oh, close they really are. I think those trees kind of put that out of sight, out of mind kind of thing, so they are right there. Uh, but the store obviously is, is huge, has always been huge, and that's a big asset for, for Campbell and the area. Uh, and, you know, I think the store's been there a pretty long time, so I think maybe a lot of the homeowners haven't been there as long as the store, although I'm sure some have been there longer. Uh, but all these issues that, that came up are, again, I guess I would just go back, uh, to what I said at the beginning, is more or less, I think that the residents and the city can, can live with all the conditions. It's just a question of, you know, will Home Depot comply? And, you know, the, I think the city can only do so much, but I, I, you know, I think they can do quite a bit, and I think they're gonna you know, kind of work on these things. I think that's, you know, kind of what, uh, Nishant and Ralph have just said here, so, uh, I think the conditions are, are reasonable, and I think there's something that the residents can live with, uh, and will Home Depot comply? I, you know, I don't know, I, I, I as the one speaker said, you know, it, it would have been nicer if the manager of the store was here and somebody that, you know, pu- put a face with it, but I think the consultant kind of appeased me a little bit by mentioning how their, their company has worked with Home Depot for many, many years, uh. And I guess all we could do is, you know, this is what we're, we're stating, the, the rules as clearly as we can, and then we'll try to enforce those rules as best we can and hope that Home Depot does a good job, and, and if they don't, you know, we're, we'll have to ask the residents to not be shy about, you know, letting the city know that there's problems and, and we'll just try to address them and try to, you know, do a compromise so everybody's more or less happy, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen? Corey, did you have any que- any questions or thoughts?
Yeah, um, I think a lot of the concerns are of the residents are either, you know, kind of out of our hands, like with the vendors and the day laborers, or they've been addressed. Um, the one thing I've heard that I'm wondering if we can do something about is the trash issue. Um, like, can we ask Home Depot to put, like, more trash cans in the parking lot, so these people that are kind of, um, I guess technically loitering aren't throwing trash everywhere, um. Is that something we can do?
That sounds like a reasonable condition that we can add. Uh, we do also have a condition requiring that Home Depot will install trash capture inserts and all storm drain catch basins, and they'll need to submit verification of that to the public works department. So that'll address some of the issues, but I think it's reasonable to add a condition requiring more trash cans.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's the only thing I can really think of that's additional, you know, they can't, they can't use the western side to drive their forklifts according to this. Um, they have to keep all storage away from the west side according to this. The people smoking are going to be moved away. Um, I think that was most of the things that we can address, so thanks for your work, Nishant. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I, I sort of have a, a question first about, about somebody, uh, one of the, one of the residents mentioned, uh, about noise from, uh, cleaning the parking lot, I guess early in the morning, I'm not quite sure how early that was, um. But do we have, do we have, um, I should know the answer to this, but do we, do we have, um, restriction on, on cleaning, uh, early in the morning, uh? You know, just, uh, you know, I have to put up with leaf blowers, right? So, um, which many of us have to deal with, but, but i- i- is there a, a limit to when, uh, they can go out and and, and clean their parking lot prior to opening uh, either very late at night or very early in the morning?
If you look at condition nine I, we call out the parking lot cleanup hours. That is between nine AM and eleven PM.
Okay.
The, uh, condition nine I specifies parking lot cleanup hours, and that's between nine AM and eleven PM.
Between nine AM and?
Eleven PM.
Eleven PM. Okay, um. So, um, you know, it seems to me, you know, i- i- in, in the question of like, uh, that, um, Mary Ann, her husband pu- uh, put out about, about putting this off and, and, and allowing them to, um, um, prove, prove themselves on the existing conditions. Uh, it seems to me that it's better to put in more conditions, more specific conditions, more restrictive conditions, and see how it goes rather than, you know, putting it off further, um. I, I would rather, I would rather put in these conditions which seem to be fairly comprehensive and then, um, uh, um, see how it goes and, uh, and evaluate it with, you know, at the very la- latest, a year later. Um, uh, I, I do have a question about, um, code enforcement. Um, it's my impression with the city that code enforcement is often reactive. Somebody complains and, uh, and until somebody complains, nothing really happens. I, I mean, I put in a couple of requests myself over the years. So is there ever a proactive code enforcement? I mean, here we have a very large, the largest retail vendor in the city, uh, that takes up a a, a big lot in, in an area that's adjacent to a property that has obviously issues. Uh, is it, does it make sense that code enforcement can be proactive in terms of on occasion unannounced checking? Or is that something that code enforcement doesn't do?
Uh, generally, code enforcement is reactive, and that's normal to all cities. I'd say once the complaint's issued, they're proactive on verifying, and will often go back and verify a couple times if there's an issue or not, if it's been addressed. Uh, to your point of, could you, I think in this case, if you have a case where there's multiple violations, could you assign sort of a, a staff enforcement officer just to, to go out and proactively look at it? I'd say that's something that's been done before that we could look at. I'd say from staff's perspective, one thing to think about we could bring back if these conditions are not being adhered to, and perhaps at this, at the twelve month check-in, there might be a tool where, uh, Home Depot actually funds a, you know, half-time, quarter-time enforcement position that just acts to constantly monitor. Uh, I think it's our professional observation, we're not there yet, but that's a tool that we could hold, uh, in our back pocket for further action.
Okay. All right. So, you know, my, my, my tendency is to go ahead and, and recommend the resolution because I think it's better to have something more in place that deals with, um, as, a, a lot of the complaints, and this seems to be very specific on, on, I don't have a, you know, on the, on the storage issues and, and the delivery issues and the west side. And it seems to me that there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot in there that, that hopefully will, uh, make a difference. Um, I, I, in, in general, I, I don't have a prob- I've been going to Home Depot for twenty-five years, um, uh, and, and I don't have a problem with the storage on the back, which is, uh, butts up against, uh, a, a, you know, a, a personal storage facility, and on the east side, it's, you know, near Salmar, there, there's no, there's no residential over on, on the east or the south side. So to me, it's, the big issue is, is the west side. And, and I certainly commiserate with, uh, with the, the residents there, and I love to see Home Depot abide by the new restrictions, but I would like to see the restrictions put in place and see how they go. So I would be supportive of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Vice Chair?
Uh, I also feel like the restrictions would be better. Uh, the thing I don't like about this is that no one from Home Depot is here. Uh, when we had Khartoum, not a very similar situation, but code violations, their management showed up and looked us in the eye and heard all the commentary, and I, it's not sitting very well with me that no one from Home Depot showed up with this. So I have an unorthodox suggestion, uh, which I want to take a straw poll on, which is that we continue this item until someone from the actual Home Depot store that would be responsible for a lot of the policing of this to show up and have a conversation with us about what they intend to do, because I, I'm just not really happy with the consultant telling us they're going to do it.
Yep, the representative.
I, I know the consultant is here, but I mean, someone from Home Depot, uh, the actual store location. But happy to hear from.
We open the hearing.
Um, I, I'd agree, I'd be agreeable with that. Okay, uh, I'd like to open the public hearing to hear, uh, what the consultants say. Uh, so I'm opening the public hearing. Cassandra, do you have a, um, response to this suggestion?
Yes, so I, I just wanted to chime in really quick that our Home Depot staff, I talked to the manager. Um, she is a new store manager. She's not new to Home Depot, but she was new to this location. She did want to come to the hearing, and I just, you know, not knowing everything and all the history of this store, I advised her not to and to definitely come to the city council hearing so that her and I can sit down and talk and, you know, walk through everything. Um, so I just wanted to put it out there that she did want to come. Um, I just did not want her to feel ambushed or anything like that or intimidated just because she didn't know all of the history that was behind this. So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Cassandra, um, I met another store manager
Mm-hmm.
a number of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Cooperative on the program that I was working on. Um, how often do you have changes in store managers at this Home Depot?
Um, so Ryan was at, I, I'm sure that you were working with Ryan. Ryan was working at this store for over five years, so it doesn't change very often. Um, he got promoted to a new position, and that is why we brought in a new store manager to this location. Um, so it wasn't turnover or anything like that, he just took a promotion, but he was with this location for over five years.
Okay.
Chair, Cam Carter is a member of the public that wants to speak, if you would allow it.
I will allow it.
Thank you. Since you opened the public hearing again, I thought it'd come back up. So I asked before about cease and desist and what was enforcement, there was some comment. I would like to make a recommendation that at three, six, and nine months that you do an evaluation, that a year is a very long time for these neighbors that have been putting up with this for a very long time. So I would like to ask for you to add to your list of conditions that at three, six, and nine months that there is an assessment and that code enforcement does a surprise visit to check on the enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, um, so. Actually, uh, Actually. I know, but but we have a large, a large. I understand. What does the commission think?
It's a two minutes.
Okay, how about, how about one minute? I'll give you one minute if you want to rebuttal or something, but, but, but only one person, one minute. One minute, one person. And that's it, because, because, because we got other people waiting.
Okay, here I am, one minute. So first of all, Cassandra has been with the consulting firm, I'm sure, which, how many stores are in the chain, Cassandra, that you represent? I know Home Depot Campbell is store six forty-two, is that your understanding?
Uh, yes.
So you're representing over six hundred stores?
Uh, no, we represent a specific area.
Okay, so your history with this store is not very, just, that's enough. Secondly, the new store manager, actually, she has worked at that store before. She was a cashier when I worked there. So she does have history with the store, she knows about all the prior regulations, she knows about prior complaints. So I agree, maybe she didn't want to get ambushed, but saying that she wasn't, she's new to the situation and has no backstory is, that's false.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, public comments are now closed. So we have a suggestion from Vice Chair about continuing the motion, continuing the meeting to, next time we meet. There's this, there's al- alternative recommendation to add three, six and nine months check-in rather than wait the whole year.
I do feel slightly better knowing this is going to city council if the store manager is going to attend that meeting, given that is the ultimate approval forum for this. If they come to that.
Yeah.
Like, then we don't probably need to do that twice. But I would maybe pass along our recommendation if they're not present, note that that was a big concern for us.
Sure, so let's confirm, you know, whatever we recommend is going to go to city council for final approval? Does it have to be appealed?
No, there's.
Got it, okay.
Okay, I I I'll, I'll recommend a friendly amend- amendment. It's nice to have a experienced ex-mayor here to give us some advice. Per her advice is to, is to review every, every three months. And have spot check code enforcement per the director's recommendations as part of this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Well, there's no motion yet.
No. Well, it was a friendly amendment to the.
Well, I I I'd like to maybe, maybe get a, maybe get a, you know, a, a other commissioners.
You know, I was thinking of a, of requiring a six month check-in instead of a year. And then Ms. Landry mentioned, yes, again, that's our staff time, et cetera, et cetera. I wonder if just a six month check-in is good enough, you know, pretty quick. And in the meantime, obviously, President Skib.
I can go with six months, I can go with six months.
And I wonder if we also can require in our, in our recommendation a condition that store manager attend city council hearing, can we actually require that, is that legally possible?
Council will be approving the actions, I have the condition, but I think it'd be put clearly in the record that the commission is asking that the store manager be at the city council.
And I would also add, if the commission is recommending a review of six and twelve months, that the app can be required to pay ten thousand dollars to cover the two meetings, not just five thousand dollars for one.
So there is a fee for the twelve month payment?
Correct, for staff time. It's a bit of expense for us to actually evaluate the operation, site visits, staff report, presentation, city attorney time.
Is that okay with you?
I, it, it's fine with me, I just. Let's do that, yeah, let's do that. There's Home Depot.
So, and and so for, for my part, my comments, I think six months is a good compromise. I would have gone for three, six and nine months myself, but I think six months is a very compromised with the understanding that they could get their hours limited in six months. It's not like, oh, and then I'm going to do it in six months, you know. In six months, it's a real review, you know, if they, if, you know, they are not a good neighbor, then they can have their hours limited. Because I don't believe that fine really goes, w- we really have that much of an effect to a company like that.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, thank you.
Being a resolution of the planning commission of the city, I move that being a resolution of the planning commission of the city Campbell, recommending approval of an applicant initiated major modification to previously approved plan development permit PD ninety-one dash oh one, modifying the operational characteristics of an existing hardware store with the garden center and property located at four eighty East Hamilton Avenue, file number PLN two oh two three dash fifty-two, with a modification that there will be a review at both six months and twelve months with the appropriate fees applied. Is that good? And and recommendation that the store manager.
The trash can, trash.
Oh, the trash and the, and the trash containers be, what was that?
Additional trash containers be provided as determined by the director.
Okay, additional trash may be provided as, as per the director's direction.
Is there a second? You have a motion and a second? No more discussions? Please take your walk. Mr. Majiski?
Aye.
Mr. Sizer?
Aye.
Mr. Buckbender?
Aye.
Mr. Kray?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Chair Kamkark? Aye. Okay, thank you. So that motion passes unanimously. We move on to the last item.
Apologies, and just for the record, the city council date is tentatively scheduled for March.
March fourth. Thank you. Yes, let's, let's, let's take a five minutes break and then we come back for the last item. There is no. Hello. Meeting will come to order. Third, or the last item is Campbell Technology Park EIR scoping session. Public scoping meeting to receive comments from interested public agencies, organizations and individuals on the scope and content of a focused environmental impact report for the proposed Campbell Tech Park, Technology Park project. On property located at six thirty-five, six fifty-five, six seventy-five and six ninety-five. The Campbell Technology Parkway. The proposed project is a two hundred and ninety unit residential development that consists of twenty-seven, twenty, two stories, single family detached homes, three story townhome style condominiums with hundred and forty-nine units across twenty-eight buildings and four story townhome style condominiums with hundred and fourteen units across fifteen buildings. The proposed project would demolish the existing structures on site to redevelop the site with the residential development and would include utility and infr- infrastructure improvements, landscaping, construction of a new stormwater drainage system and offsite improvements. It is file number PLN two oh two three dash one sixty-five. And Mr. Daniel Farmer, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. This is the public scoping meeting for the environmental impact report for the Campbell Tech Park project. Quick overview of tonight's meeting. The meeting tonight is really intended to be a listening session for staff and the consultant to hear feedback from the public and commission on the nature of the analysis of the environmental impact report that's being prepared for this project. Do some quick introductions, a project overview, go through what the EIR process is and talk about next steps and then open up for public comments. Of course, I'm Daniel, your senior planner, and I am here with the Stantec consultant, Anna Brundt? Project manager with Stantec who is assisting the city in preparation of the environmental documents. And we will be splitting the presentation, I'll be going first and then Anna will follow up on the sequel discussion. So as the commission is aware, the project site is the Campbell Technology site. This is a approximately seventeen acre technology research development campus that was built nearly thirty years ago. It has four buildings totaling two hundred and eighty thousand square feet of area. This was designated by the prior general plan as a research and development and three of the four parcels were rezoned by the new general plan for residential purposes. The project that is under review currently is the city's sole builder's remedy project. This was subject to an SB three thirty-eight housing crisis act preliminary application that was submitted prior to the effective adoption of the city's housing elements. The application proposes two hundred and ninety residential units, twenty-seven of which are detached single family units and the remaining two hundred and sixty-three are multifamily townhome style condominium units across multiple buildings. As required by the law for a builder's remedy project, twenty percent of those units would be affordable to lower income households. That, that does exceed the city's minimum fifteen percent requirement that would otherwise apply. Here we just have a site plan showing the configuration of the site. The detached units are shown at the bottom, those would provide a transition buffer to the mobile home community adjacent to sites to the east. And then the taller buildings would be further interior into the site. And here we have some illustrations, these are the detached single family dwellings and then these are the townhome structures that are taller and get further into the project. that are taller and get further into the project site. With that, I will hand it over to Anna.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Anna Radnich with STAN Tech Consulting Services. Tonight's just gonna give you a little overview of CEQA, why are we here, what is an EIR, what is a scoping meeting? So CEQA is California Environmental Quality Act. It's a law that all discretionary projects need to be evaluated against. There's twenty resources that every project is evaluated against, and we're looking at the project, the potential impacts of a proposed project against the environment, the physical effects on the environment. What is an EIR? The focused EIR is the document that we are currently preparing for the project. So initially, you prepare an initial study. During public review of that initial study, we have a scoping meeting, that's why we're here tonight, and then the EIR is the second component of the same CEQA evaluation, and where we, since this is a focused EIR, items that were not scoped out in the initial study are moved forward to the EIR. The EIR process, this side basically outlines the process start to finish. The squares in green are the four opportunities for the public to provide comment on the EIR. So tonight, where the star is, where the scoping meeting, the notice of preparation is more or less the, A, we're preparing this document, it's out for public review, please provide your comment, we're here tonight to collect comment, we'll then prepare the CEQA document, the EIR, that'll go out for another forty-five day public review period, that'll be another opportunity for the public or agencies to provide comment, and then again during the planning commission hearing. So as I mentioned, we're kind of, we're doing a focused EIR, so the initial study that was released as part of the NOP, the notice of preparation, we did scope out portions of sections. These are the eleven resources that were scoped out. Doesn't mean that they weren't looked at, it just means that they were determined to have less than significant impacts. Next slide, and then these are the nine resources that are moving forward to the EIR. But I'd just like to point out, noise, for example, noise does have certain questions that were scoped out in the initial study, and then other questions that are moving forward to the EIR. So again, tonight, we're not talking about necessarily the merits of the project, we're not talking about if the city should approve or deny the project, but we're really looking for comments on your review of the initial study and what you would like to see in the EIR. If you feel there's something that you know about that maybe city staff isn't aware of, or you want to make sure that it's being addressed in the EIR, tonight's the time to give the comments. So rather, any comments, of course, are welcomed. If it's a comment saying, I don't like the project, great. If you could also explain maybe why you would like certain analysis included, that would be more helpful, because that's what we will then respond to in the EIR. So just kind of, this is a timeline of where we are at, and the kind of the next steps. Right now, we're, the document is out for public review. Typically, it's a thirty-day review. The city has extended that review to give a little more time to roughly six weeks, so that'll go until February fourteenth. Tonight is our scoping meeting. After the scoping meeting, and after the public review period for the NOP, we will prepare the draft EIR. Then that'll go out for review. This summer, we'll then respond to comments and prepare the final EIR, and if everything stays on track, in probably late summer, early fall, the project will go to planning commission. So we kind of talked about how to phrase a comment, but then also this slide shows you, and we can maybe leave this one up, Daniel, this is how to actually provide your comment. So tonight, of course, we encourage people to get up, provide a speaker slip and speak, but you can also submit comments via email or mail to the information on the screen, to Daniel, basically. And I think that's it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Before we take comments, if the commission has any questions, this would be a good time.
Two, two things. One, is this a purely additive process? Like, we think that this is excessive, and, you know, there's a category which seems like it's not important or worthwhile, or I don't get why we're investigating something. Is it possible that things could be removed from the list of things to be investigated?
Yes, I can answer that briefly, and then I don't know if you want to add in. So under CEQA, there's twenty resources. CEQA has the guidelines, the state guidelines, California Environmental Quality Act, there's state guidelines, an appendix G of those guidelines outline twenty resources, and then resource questions within each resource that any project would have to be evaluated against. This project, a school project, a roller coaster project, whatever it is. And so we did an initial analysis, which is the initial study that was included with the NOP, where we went through and things like agriculture. There's no agriculture in the city. So we were able to, at a high level, do an analysis and scope that out, I'm using air quotes, right, from the EIR. So agriculture is not included in the focused EIR, but it was evaluated in the initial study. So, no, as a city or as a planning commission cannot request that certain resources be removed, but we, we look at all of them, and the ones that are less impactful, like just say agriculture, have been scoped out.
Okay, but nothing else is going to be scoped out? Like, the minimum of what's going to be evaluated is listed here.
Can you say that a different way?
So there are only nine categories?
Oh, yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying.
At least those nine will be.
So right now, these are the nine, based on our findings of the initial study, these are the nine that have been recommended to move forward. If, for example, tonight, you have personal information to know that biological resources should actually move forward, then this would be the time to share your experiences that then would lead staff to decide if we want to move that forward to the EIR.
Right, that would be adding something.
Yes.
Okay, this is a purely additive process.
Yes, yes, sorry.
The other question was for, I guess, staff, as I've been on this point commission for many a year, and apart from the EIR that we did for the general plan, like, I don't think we've been to had any of these meetings, why is this so uncommon?
Campbell's a built-out city, most of our projects are in sale and relatively small.
Why is this not in sale?
It's a builder's remedy project, so it's inconsistent with the general plan that's in effect at the time. So consistency with the general plan is basically a core requirement for virtually every single exemption category.
Gotcha. Okay, so because they're using builder's remedy to go through this whole process, right? Next slide, thank you.
Just one, one quick question that came to my mind, is that, so was there an EIR when the Campbell Technology Park was built?
There was.
Can you use the results of that EIR for some of these things, like, you know, cultural resources, tribal cultural resources? Seems like that was probably how they covered thirty years ago, twenty-eight years ago.
Yeah, so some resources, depending on the project, sometimes that is an option. Here, the timeline, it's been thirty years, so for example, cultural resources, there could be cultural resources that are now, that have been identified in those last thirty years that weren't identified at that time, that sort of thing.
Okay, Commissioner Majewski, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, there is a, I don't know what it is, it doesn't really show it on Google Maps or anything, but there's like a water reservoir or something that's a little bit to the southeast of the project, and I'm wondering just if, like, the hydrology section or something like that, that was, I assume that, I assume it's looked at, but I was just curious about what that is and how that was looked at. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a Santa Clara County Water District percolation pond.
Okay, and we, we, there was no, no foreseen impact or, you know, no significant impact anticipated, I'm assuming.
Yeah, let me just pull up the initial study here, so, correct, the hydrology and water resources is the section where that would have been evaluated, and it was evaluated in the initial study.
Gotcha, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sizil.
So, so there's a term you use, potentially significant impact from construction and operation, where you, the different categories, you either rate it as significant or less so, right? So I just want to make sure I understand what that, that means both during the construction phase and the ongoing long-term use of the property, is that correct?
Are you, are you talking about, like, in the air quality section?
In the air quality section. Okay.
Yeah, so there are certain resources where we do look at both construction impacts and operation impacts, because they're different, same with noise. Right, so like, the school is very noisy during operations, but not as noisy during construction, whereas housing development is very noise, it could be more noisy during construction and then less noisy during operation.
Okay, um, thank you. Cultural resources, is this, is this basically any archaeological things that might be like indigenous peoples and things like that?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. The transportation circulation section, so, we got this thing placed in our hands, I'm assuming that this will include access roads to this site in the glency, a curtain area, is going to be part of this transportation circulation study?
So I'll start, and then I'll maybe turn over to Daniel. In the EIR, the standard for analyzing transportation and traffic is now vehicle miles traveled. So the questions in CEQA, per the guidelines, are regarding VMT, vehicle miles traveled, not necessarily congestion, level of service, anything like that. Anything that is proposed is part of the project, so if there's any offsite improvements, onsite circulation, anything related to safety, that is evaluated in the CEQA document.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always a little bit confused about the vehicle miles traveled and how that isn't necessarily about potential congestion.
Fair, fair statement. In twenty nineteen, that's how the guidelines, that's how the guidelines were changed, in terms of CEQA.
And I would add, I mean, inside CEQA and outside CEQA, there is a delta that needs to be considered between what's here and what's being proposed. What's here is nearly three hundred square feet of R and D space that will be subtracted out, and then you have the net increase of housing units.
Right.
So the delta is relatively nominal. I don't have the traffic study, there was a traffic study that's already been prepared separate from the CEQA process, and it did not identify any notable impact, simply because the over-under between the loss of R and D campus and the housing is relatively nominal.
Okay, you're probably going to get some opposition then.
I think so.
You've mentioned, you've mentioned this before. So the other thing is, is that, and actually, I put it down on my notes before I even saw this little map about, about the, I assume you're going to be talking about this today, about, about a pedestrian bicycle bridge across Highway seventeen. Is, is that going to be involved in the study?
I believe that is, there is some policy guidance on that connection in the county or VTA bicycle master plan, but I don't believe, we have not received commentary from VTA yet on the EIR. Though I do believe they did provide a comment on the traffic study, but that was some time ago. But it is something that's already been brought to staff's attention previously.
Okay, I like the idea. So the other thing is, and again, again, I'm not sure if this fits into the, what we're trying to do tonight, but, but what has been brought up before about is the non-use of the private road, Paseo de Palomas, which goes to the mobile home, and that, there was preliminarily, that that was only going to be used for emergency services, and I think it's actually mentioned in the agenda. So, so, again, and again, I don't know if this is part of the EIR, whether or not that will be looked at in terms of possibly being used for pedestrian and bicycle access.
So the, that access was negotiated, if I recall, by the prior, the former redevelopment agency when the Campbell Tech Park, Campbell R and D Campus was originally developed, and it still remains an easement that would be used by the fire department for emergency purposes only. And so the fire department has done a very, very thorough analysis of this project, and has determined that they can safely serve the site, so they do have adequate site access to the site and out of the site.
Using that road.
And also the other public roads and private roads.
Right, right.
If it comes, and it comes down to they can access Christage during, during an emergency.
Okay, lots of luck. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair.
Given it's a builder's remedy project, like, we're going to do all this and get the circulation study results, but are we then able to actually weigh in, in terms of project approval, with the result, like, if we do this, the study, they come back, the results are really significant, but it's a builder's remedy project, do we have any leeway on actually, like, blocking the project for that? Because my understanding for builder's remedy is we have very little ability to influence these projects, so I guess I'm just questioning, like, how many of these things are we actually going to be able to legally require once the final approval's in front of us?
Fundamentally, you still need to comply with CEQA, which does require you to mitigate all impacts to the extent that is feasible without rendering the project infeasible. So it can be mitigated in some manner, the app can will be required to do.
So let me, let me add, so builder's remedy, the city has less discretion, so keep that in mind, and we can give those details when it comes back.
Sure.
At some point, but you did see this early on, that was disclosed, the city only has one builder's remedy project that says.
Yep.
Under CEQA, as, as Daniel said, let's say there's some significant impact to something up there, significant noise, if you can mitigate it, you have to, that's pretty much state law.
Okay.
So if it says, if there's something out there that says build a wall, or do something in your operations that doesn't impact the neighbors, we're required to implement that. If for some reason it's infeasible, you can't do it, or something called, as Daniel said, significant unavoidable impacts, and the city has to go through a process of disposing that. So CEQA and the builder's remedy are kind of two different things, but, but nothing in the realm of CEQA says, like, if there's a significant impact and you can do something about it, the city has to do something about it.
Good, okay, great, thank you. One more question. The reason not to do more is cost, or just that there's no, like, we almost never do these, why not do all twenty, just for kicks?
Yes.
Is it money?
No, so we, so that's the, the confusing part about a focused EIR, is we already did eleven of the sections, and that is what the initial study is that was attached to the NOP, so we did look at them. We have already determined, and we already know that, for example, agriculture, there's no agriculture in the city, right? So we've already gone through that process of doing that evaluation, and then we're focusing the EIR on the remaining nine resources. that have potential for more likely impacts. I know it seems counterintuitive, right? So in your mind, you're like, oh, why don't you do all 20, all as the same level at the EIR level? That's your question versus some of them getting scoped out in the initial study. It's just.
So Commissioner Fields, it does save time and money. Yeah.
Okay.
So if there's something like, it's obviously, there's others like mineral resources that obviously aren't Campbell issue. We do an initial review and put it aside and we focus on areas that are substantial. That being said, if commissioners and the public put in the record something that says, whoa, 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 you really missed looking at this issue, that the door's not closed. The staff would have to go back and take a look at it and study it further.
And well, that's actually already happened. Initially, we were anticipating scoping out the tribal cultural resources that due to the interest of various tribes, that's now being incorporated into the EIR itself.
Good. Great. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, I'm going back to the builder's remedy and the effect on this. My understanding is builder's remedy is not, doesn't have to comply with the latest changes. But the changes that were in effect when it filed the application, it has to comply with all of those. It's not like they can just sail through, you know, without any.
Well, there's kind of two things. So the concept of builder's remedy here is really kind of a marriage between two bodies of law. You have the Housing Crisis Act and the Housing Accountability Act. So the Housing Crisis Act, so SB 330, that is use of a preliminary application that locks in the standards in effective time. So that application was submitted, actually the very evening of the city council consideration of the general plan adoption. But those were the rules that were in effect. Obviously, general plan had not been adopted and was not in effect. So it was under the old general plan. Now, at the time, because we did not have a housing element, we were now subject to builder's remedy because the Housing Accountability Act has an incentive for cities to adopt their housing elements in a timely manner. Says that if we do not have a certified housing element, you cannot deny a housing project for it being inconsistent with the general plan. So through utilization of those two bodies of law, you're able to force the city to review the application in a period of time where we have no ability to deny it because it was inconsistent with the general plan in the fact of time. So while the property is, for purposes of this application review, is own R and D, that's not a basis for denial. Now that said, it is still subject to the rules and requirements of the zoning code and general plan in effect at the time. So for instance, we have requirements pertaining to stormwater and lighting that they have to comply with. Those are things that we can still and will compel compliance with.
And if they don't, you, you do have the ability to deny it because they didn't comply with those.
We were simply conditioned though, as conditions of approval.
I see, yes.
And I will point out, this is not a, they opted not to exercise densky bonus law. So there are no waivers or concessions. So that's not particularly critical here because the zoning at the time is planned development, which really doesn't have any standards from the zoning district specific context. But there's actually not a, for instance, there's not maximum FAR or no setback to the PD zoning in effect at the time.
Okay, I understand. And then, um, I know when I was, um, when I was driving, um, I saw that emergency access, you know, it's sound, it looks like it hasn't been used, you know, in a while, but, but you're saying there's an easement there.
Sure.
They can always.
And the project will need to modify the access point so that it's accessible to emergency vehicles.
Wonderful. Um, okay. If, unless there's any other questions, the commissioner will be minded.
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with the idea here. Like I know we're here to get input, but, um, I'm aware that the city controversial development and that a lot of people don't like it. So if I understand, this is specifically about what environmental impacts do you think are not included and should be? So for example, if you're concerned about noise, I believe noise is already included and we'll be looking at noise. So we are already doing that, just to be aware.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments? Hearing none, I was going to open it to the, I guess applicant goes first, right? Or is this just the?
Yeah, the applicant has advised that they do not speak since this really does a listening session.
Right.
Public and for the commission by comments and staff.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it to public, um, to the public. Do we have a list of speakers? Okay, you could please read the names. Thank you.
Yeah, we have one public speaker online and then several requests to speak in person.
Okay. Do I have a slide also of the issues that are not currently analyzed?
Right there.
Okay, great. Maybe that's.
And again, just for the record, they were analyzed.
Sorry.
But not warranted.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping me honest.
And Susan, Susan. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Anne Suzie. I live at 2212 Central Park Drive. Nice to see you too, Kamkar.
Thank you, welcome.
Mr. Sister, feels like a CIC reunion here, rest of commissioners. Um, I don't come and speak often. Uh, the last time I was at city council when the drive-through for Starbucks was, and, and then I talked about the traffic impact. Um, so one thing I want to, for you to consider, um, is pedestrian access, lack of sidewalks that are kind of leading in there. And there's two bus stops. And if we're really looking at people getting out of the cars and walking and taking public transportation, really need to look at like, how are they going to get to that public transportation? I'd really like, especially along McGlinsey. I mean, I can't walk to Starbucks myself from my house. It'd be really nice if we had some sidewalks. Um, there's also a place on Union Avenue where they would have, there's less sidewalks to get to the bus stop on Bascom. So you'd have to have a better crosswalk over there. So really looking at pedestrian and bicycle traffic and safety, safe routes to school. Um, I'd really like you to look at that impact. Cause I think the traffic impact, people are going to actually start coming down my street a lot more. And we have a lot of kids playing in the streets. So some traffic calming measures would be nice to look at. The other thing is, um, public services with all the new people that are going to be living there, where's like the impact on our fire stations? When we just had a fire on Union, right? We had to call other cities to come. Where is that money for the, the services going to come without taxing the rest of the city? Um, so that, just looking at where, how the services are going to be able to be provided for that. I am all for housing, I, you know, I know we need it. Uh, but I really want you to look at the neighborhoods that are already around there and the traffic impact that it's going to put on them and pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. We've had a lot of accidents in our area, so services and, and safety with, uh, access getting to the bus stations and using public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susan Landry. Welcome back.
Hi, Jen. Uh, I made a copy of a map. You guys should all have a copy. This is not just what I would like to see. There's probably a dozen people somewhere here tonight that this is input to this map. Uh, as Anne Suzie mentioned, there's two bus stops, one at Bascom and Union and one at Camden and Kurtner. Going from the project site to Bascom and Union is the green line. The sidewalk is on one side of the street on Union. And then there's no sidewalk past Dry Creek. And then the sidewalk's on the other side and Dry Creek has this very wide sweeping corner. And there's no crosswalk there. It's very unsafe to try to get, um, people to the bus stop. The blue dash line is no sidewalks or very intermittent sidewalks. And to get to the bus stop on Kurtner. The red dash line along Kurtner, there is no bike lane. The Kurtner Avenue part that's in San Jose does have a bike lane and sharrows for the part that they don't. There's a speeding traffic. I live on Kurtner, terrible traffic, the mailman speeds. We would like to see a stop sign and crosswalks at Solarno and Kurtner. What's happens in the morning is the traffic on Kurtner and McGlinsey backs up to my house on Kurtner and all the way back McGlinsey. So they cut through, that's the red solid lines. The cars go whipping through Central Park, Cambrian, Dallas and try to cut through coming out at, at McGlinsey and Kurtner. We've been asking for several years for traffic calming measures on Central and on Cambrian. And we feel that this is the time to add that to the environmental evaluation. Um, one of the things that, uh, there's a purple rectangle up at the corner of the site. One of you guys mentioned about a potential bridge. Uh, my concern is that there leaves a spot for, if the bridge does go there, the landing for the bridge, that there needs to be a place, if that is where the bridge is going to go. So like I said, this is not just me making this map. This is my input from several members of the community and I think you'll hear more from them tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Wonderful. Thank you.
Kevin Pasquet.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, hey, build it. Those pictures of the palace, I'd like to live there. But, uh, things to keep in consideration when it comes to traffic and circulation. Just that last point, of course, I love the ideas, so I'll voice that on record. If you don't build the bridge over the freeway, please take into consideration the parking. So it was mentioned earlier, there's no net loss or gain of traffic because there's so many people in theory working there that would be replaced with potential people living. But my thing is parking because it's probably within a half mile of certain stops or light rail. But we all know you can't cross a freeway to get to light rail. So for any three-story, four-story buildings, they gotta have their own parking. So I know the laws or rules might be more lenient because it's near light rail, but it's not near light rail. So that's one thing I would say consider. Two, yeah, backup, uh, walking to Starbucks, understanding, you just need safety. There's going to be traffic, there's going to be backups in the morning, those won't go away, but it shouldn't. We're not going to encourage people to walk. No one's going to go to these bus stops if you have to go through the speeders. Sidewalks, lightning with the light, I think on, uh, Union we have near the park. That's wonderful because it constricts the lane, people slow down. So when we're given the examples on Kurtner, where to have a sidewalk, something like that would be great. Or near Dry Creek, maybe one more little light crosswalk for safety. So those things I think could help for people who are living there with children playing. Speed, that's not good, so we need to find a way to slow people down. But go ahead, build it, but just watch out, parking, parking, parking. Don't make it go to the street. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Torman.
Hello, everyone. I'm representing West Valley Construction. Uh, we are a business that is on McGlinsey. Uh, I've been there since 1971. We have five, we occupy five buildings which are on McGlinsey and Campbell Technology Parkway. So of course, this impacts us. Um, our major concern is safety. We drive a lot of trucks down McGlinsey. McGlinsey, as everyone knows, is small type and the outfit doesn't have a sidewalk. So our concern is safety for our employees and for the residents that are going to occupy these 290 housing units or houses, right? So with that, um, also with safety, um, just our ability to do business. Um, and our ask is that we want the city and its SEQA consultant to robustly study traffic and circulation impacts in border areas, streets and intersections, and impacts upon existing conditions. This should also include pedestrian and bicycle traffic. That's one of our main concerns. Right now, if you were to go down McGlinsey riding a bike toward 17, wow. Or pedestrian or kid on electric scooter with our trucks driving down the road, that's bad. Um, another thing we want is, we also want noise impact from existing businesses. So, and we want that analyzed and that's going kind of backwards. Not the noise that the houses are going to make, the noises that we're making. It's kind of like the classic, you move in, exit an airport, so complaining about the airplanes. This is the same thing. We don't want, we've been there doing our thing. We don't want the complaints, just like we heard with the Home Depot, the backup alarms, everything like that. And I think others are going to say the same thing with businesses. It's an industrial, commercial area, we make noise. And now we have residential coming in, which we're, we're all for, but it's just got to work for everybody. There's my buzzer. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thomas Keller.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Thomas Keller. I live in the Campbell Village neighborhood. I'm there for over thirty years. Of course, neighborhood came later on, around twelve, thirteen years ago. I'm familiar with the bridge from VTA because of I'm the initiator of the bridge. The bridge is not on this map. It was on end of Kurtner Avenue. Go straight over the creek connecting to the other bridge, go to VTA hub on Winchester. It was in VTA, but it was dumped because of Bart. Okay. Tonight, I would like to present the low-cost, high-impact solution I found out is a four-way stop on Solarno and Kurtner. You don't even need to pay the, paint the sidewalk, uh, crosswalk because a stop means stop. When the city can, um, when you as a commissioner can direct the city to do this small project, it is great for our neighborhood and show progress because of the Campbell Village neighborhood plan headed in, signed into law in 2017, revised in 2022. And all these ideas are in that plan. It's kind of confusing that Daniel said, I don't know. It's been written down in the plan, but later on became the general plan or whatever. It just goes in like that. So I walk around five miles in my neighborhood every day. I cross Kurtner several times and I notice even in my busy walk, it gets more and more dangerous. Yeah. That's how it is. People may know me walking. I'm always walking. When you have questions about this neighborhood, even McGlinsey, Christage, going to the community park, by the way, it's agriculture. There's an agriculture park or right there south of this black thing. It calls Campbell Community Park. People garden, it's agriculture. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you what, what that intersection was again?
Um, it's the square, Kurtner and Solarno. Solarno has stop signs, Kurtner doesn't have stop signs. Kurtner, Kurtner Avenue becomes more speedy.
I see. Okay.
And the city has, has no budget, has no ideas, has no things to improve this project since 15 years. But now I said, hey, two stop signs, two white lines, two times stop on the road. That's at least something.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Chair, I have one, I have no more speaker cards, but I do have one person online who should just speak.
Thank you.
Amir, I guess, Sadiq.
Yeah, hi. I represent Campbell Collision Center and Bob's Sewing Service. Uh, some of the things that were already discussed is traffic and noise. And, uh, it's when it comes to, uh, traffic, first responders were also addressed with our business, Bob Sewing Service. We work with law enforcement, we work with the sheriff's department, um, CHP, CHP evidence and Los Gatos PD. We have, uh, we need to have road response signs, as I know, as required by law enforcement. We used to actually, you know, be on rotation with Campbell PD as well. And we're trying to get back on rotation with Campbell PD. But the point is that with a traffic impact, it's going to, uh, with more people going and coming out, that is going to also affect how soon as, you know, assistance to first responders, we can get on scenes. So, uh, we operate 24 hours, uh, 24/7. So at nighttime, that goes back to, you know, the noise that when our trucks coming back to the yard, they're backing up over there. And I think, uh, is there going to be an issue about why is there the backup, you know, backup alarm for the trucks, all that noise? Sometimes, you know, unloading a car can be relatively loud because it's mangled and we have to somehow get it off the trucks. So with the traffic and getting actually to, um, locations, uh, McGlinsey and Kurtner, that intersection in the morning as it is, is backed up, you know, as somebody else mentioned. Now with additional units coming in there, it's going to be backed up even more. It's going to affect how we can assist first responders. And then at the same time, the noise complaint is just going to, uh, reversely and it has to be studied as well.
Okay, um, can you please repeat who you represent again? I didn't hear that part of it. Okay, can you please repeat who you represent again? I didn't hear that part of it.
I represent Campbell Collision Center. And Bob's, yeah, Campbell Collision Center and Bob's Sewing Service.
Got it, got it, okay. Thank you for that. Any questions? Thank you. We're done with all the speakers? Good evening. Please identify yourself.
My name's Tyler. I work on McGlinsey. I just want to bring in the fire aspect of it. Back in two thousand and five, our shop burned down based off a muffler falling off a car on the freeway. So I want to make sure that's noted, that stuff, not just on this side, gets noted, but stuff on the other side of the wall too.
On the freeway side.
Yeah, so, because I mean, it was one shop, but now when you put a bunch of housing on top of each other, it just runs like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire hazards. Yes, please. You could please identify yourself.
Chad and all, I work on McGlinsey, own a building on McGlinsey. It seems to me that there, I haven't heard what the actual impact analysis is of versus of the traffic right now versus what they think will happen with the increased housing or the housing that'll be put there. There are several times when I try to just get out, let's say sometime between seven-thirty and eight-thirty to get out to a freeway, like eight-eighty or get onto the eight-eighty to go somewhere else. It takes me twenty minutes to get past Starbucks and there's no other way that these people are gonna go when they're trying to get to eight-eighty right now, at least in the plan that I read. There is no other way that they're gonna be able to do it. These people are gonna be going to work every morning and it's gonna be far worse than Technology Center because they're just going there. So getting out, I don't know how that's gonna be studied. I'd love to put a camera there and just my, just me personally and watch what's going because I guarantee you, there's no way that what's coming in and out of that technology park is gonna be like two hundred ninety residential units. No way. And right now, McGlinsey, Christitch, and that means East McGlinsey and South McGlinsey. There, it's like, it's like a dead zone. We can't get code enforcement out there. The police officer are outstanding. But when they come out there, their hands are tied to do anything, so there's tons of rubbish up against all the percolation ponds and nobody does anything about it. It's like, you're industrial, we don't need to do anything. You should, you should have known when you lived, when you bought that location, we're not gonna keep, keep it up. And the whole idea of people driving by a percolation pond that's got, you know, overgrowth, forfeit and a bunch of RV trash, it's just gonna be exacerbated. Right now, it's already bad. When there's gonna be back, it's gonna back up all the way into East McGlinsey, which right now it is not. It kind of stops at South and East. It's gonna get even worse.
Thank you. Thank you for that testimony. Okay, anybody else? One more.
All right.
Welcome. Go card now.
My name's Toni Lido. I go to Technology Park every day walking my dog. And half the time you can't park there. And it's non-people that park there. They don't work in that. They work in other parks, but they park at the park. And so what's gonna happen when you start doing construction? Are you gonna close the park? And are they gonna give us more access? Because right now you can't park at the park.
So.
Because you have the gardeners, the gardening little center, which is great. And then you can walk around the perch ponds. The, right now, three of the ponds, of the four, of four ponds are filled. And so it's just really nice to take my dog out there every day. I've been doing it since two thousand and thirteen. And it's my second dog I've been taking, trained to go out there. And she can go out there with not bothering the ducks at all. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware that people do use that park. And the way the traffic's gonna flow there is gonna be disaster zone. All right, I just want to let you guys know.
Thank you for bringing it up. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
Is access to parking an environmental impact?
Access to parking on the project, excuse me, we do look at activity on the project site. Some of that will be evaluated under the circulation portion. And then the city is separately doing a traffic impacts study that will also include it.
A sufficiency of parking is not environmental. I think one of the largest concerns we're hearing is, I'm gonna have a hard time parking. Is that relevant here?
Yeah, so parking itself is not looked at, is not a sequel question, but this project is providing seven hundred and eighteen parking spots for the two hundred and ninety units.
And strictly speaking, under the law, because they are proximity to transportation facilities across the freeway, as law is written, they are not subject to a local parking requirement.
Right, but they are providing parking, correct, nonetheless. Thank you, just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Commissioner Majewski, any questions or any comments?
Yeah, cause.
Sorry.
Anybody else?
Okay, I'm closing the public.
Okay, I just wanted to have one comment, just to clarify that. Sequa analyzes the effect of the project on the physical environment. It does not analyze the offices. Does not analyze the impact of the environment onto the project. That's not a sequel.
So.
That has been litigated relatively recently.
Can you please bring an example? I'm not exactly sure what that means.
Well, the, I think a concern a gentleman raised regarding noise impacts to the future residents. That may be a noise impact in the common sense of the term, but it is not a sequel impact. Sequa doesn't work in that direction. Sequa works in other directions.
But will Sequa, so will preparation of Sequa address and document the existence of that noise at the time of analysis?
The city separately has noise requirements that are intended to protect future residents from excessive noise, as does the California Building Code. But again, from a sequer perspective, the fact that there may be a noisy environment that future residents are going into, that is not a sequel impact that is after within the scope of the EIR.
It's the effects of the project on the environment.
You know, but I mean, I completely understand what you're saying now, except that, you know, the concern that was brought up was we're here first, we're having this noise, you know, we're operating legally, you know. We don't want ten, twenty years residents saying, hey, how come there's so much noise here?
And again, we do have local standards pertaining to noise, both indoor and outdoor noise exposure levels. There are certain requirements for STC ratings and window assemblies to ensure that the interior living spaces are quiet. You can have noise effects that are so large that you actually preclude open spaces in some areas. Sometimes we require sound walls to protect exposure to those residents, but again, none of that is within the sequel umbrella. It's simply a separate regulatory.
Got it. Okay, any, any.
I'll start.
You will start? Okay, thank you.
You know, first of all, I have all the same concerns that everybody has expressed here. From the moment I first learned about this project. The, when it was brought up, actually during the housing element process, this parcel was, the landlord actually came and volunteered to participate in providing more residential housing as to meet arena numbers and said, I'm willing to demolish the technology center and put up residential units. Because the technology center is failing. They have high vacancy rates. And they're obviously not doing well. So, so that was the initial start of this. And actually, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel, but, but they're not usually builder's remedy allows, developers take builder's remedy to actually increase densities typically. Like, we're gonna get more in. They, we, during the general planning and housing element process, we had actually put this at a higher density. We were going to plan this for potentially as many as five, six, seven hundred units could go in there, okay? So, so the landlord said, well, we don't wanna do that many. We want to do three hundred. And this is the largest parcel in the city by far. So it presented a huge opportunity from the city's point of view. And, you know, I'm sure I'm not the only one, when I looked at the parcel, I go, well, geez. I wasn't even aware really of the technology. I've been here for decades and I didn't know Edith Morley Park was there. I didn't know really anything about the technology. The last time I was over there was probably when I, I'm not sure I ever went to the drive-in, but there was a drive-in there. So, 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 you know, it's an odd place because of the nature of the fact that it's surrounded by Highway seventeen and then the entire industrial segment that's south of it. And the access is very limited, right? On McGlinsey and then Technology Way. So, so it is clearly got problems in terms of potentially things like congestion and in and out and kind of those things. So I, you know, I have no, I have no, I'm not at odds with anything that anybody has said about this area. Yet, it's an opportunity for us to put in three hundred residential units and get a number of affordable units. So the question is, so one question I have is Mayor Landry's map. It's, I know, but you know, it's like saying president, right? You know, it all makes sense, okay? The question I have is, in terms of incorporating this somehow, the requirement to do these kinds of things on McGlinsey and Kurtner and bus stops and, and, and stop signs and things like that to improve the in and out. Is that even something that can be part of the EIR? Or is this really, I mean, the city has to, I mean, to put that as a condition for like the developer to, to pay for that kind of stuff. I mean, you know, we've never seen anything like this before, so it's like, I don't see that as likelihood. It would be the city that would need to make the improvements in alignment with this development. So I guess my question is, does any, any of this really relate to the EIR? Okay, you have an answer?
I might, can I offer something that might be somewhat helpful here? One of the questions that comes up in the EIR is, is this, does this contravene or is this congruent with existing plan? The city is this year worked on a multimodal plan for bike pedestrian safety, which I don't know if folks here are aware of that, the bid is supposed to be awarded in April and the timeline is over the next few years. And like, I think the idea is that we would want is a new development would be congruent with, with that plan, which is still in the process. I don't know how you'd express that.
But the question is whether or not it actually would trigger something actually getting done to make the, the, that area more conducive to not only traffic, but bicycling and walking.
But ideally, that would be part of what we're doing in the, in producing the multimodal plan.
Yeah, but that's.
So if it helps the commissioner, so, so just to reframe, this is the first part of the process, a lot of steps ahead. So tonight is really, hey, I have a concern in this area, you need to focus on it, and then we're gonna go off and study it. So I, we don't have answers to those questions, maybe, maybe not. We'll look with Public Works, we'll work with Sequa. Hearing loud and clear from community and commissioners, this is a high priority, so we've noted it. And within the bounds of Sequa, if there's a way to look at it and see if there's impacts, some way to mitigate it, yeah, we'll do that. But sorry, I can't commit staff and consultant to say what will not count. More helpful would be if you said, hey, this is a high priority, this is an environmental area that you should study. The study, if you got some specifics we should look at, that's great. But getting down the road, is the city gonna commit to do certain things? We can't go to that.
Yeah, obviously. So, so I'm certainly supportive of anything, whether it's ex-Mayor Landry's map or, or you know, any of the other recommendations. I do have a question about the percolation ponds. Percolation ponds are on, if I'm not mistaken, are under the, somebody was saying it's like, okay, they get trash and everything, but percolation ponds are under the auspices, I believe, of valley water.
Of water, correct.
So it's really, they're the ones that would be need to clean up their act, so to speak, right?
Yeah, they are responsible for their own facilities.
Okay, now, there was a point about parking, not, not within the, not within the development itself, but there is no parking other than curb parking for the public park. And so I actually noticed the fact that there are a lot of cars parked on the curb myself. I've been there a couple of times recently. And, you know, people aren't living in the cars for the most part, but, but I guess they're working nearby and they, and they use the spaces. So there is no parking lot for the park presently. So it would seem to me that this is, there's a negative implication here in terms of parking for public use of the park. And that we're gonna have a problem with people having access to the park in terms of parking. And whether or not that's something that the EIR should look at. So I'm just bringing that up as, as a concern as well. Just reiterating, somebody mentioned the fact that of the, of the inside parking. We are constrained by this half-mile radius. It's as the bird fly, as the bird flies to the VTA on Winchester. Doesn't, obviously makes no sense, but that's the state law, okay? So it goes over Highway seventeen, which, and the VTA is within a half-mile radius. So we are constrained by state law, I have to say. In theory, they don't need to do any more parking than they're, they're offering. In fact, they could do less. So that's just for people's identification. Let's see. Yeah, I, I'm, I, I appreciate all the input. You know, it's, it's some of the things that I've thought about myself and, and I'm in.
Thank you.
In, in currents.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Majewski, do you have any additions?
No further questions for me, thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Bookbinder?
Yeah, the, the two things I would want to highlight are integration with the city's multimodal plan, which project of this scale would certainly have some influence on that or want to tie in with that somehow. And having a lot of people living next to Edith Morley Park would lead to a lot more people using the park. So I don't know if that would mean that the resource would be less useful unless, for example, I don't know, there was a playground there or something. I know it's a considered passive park because there's not that many people who like play at the park. That would probably change, so the impact on the park, maybe we want to invest more in the park. Those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Krip.
Yeah, I would just say the couple of areas that I was a little surprised weren't getting the extended EIR treatment were, were the water quality because of perch ponds being so close. It seemed odd to me that that wasn't one of the checkboxes. And then, of course, with this, this subject is involved right now, wildfire. One gentleman mentioned about the fire that they had on McGlinsey, but we have the park right there and, and we got the Mobile Home Park right next door. So kind of surprised that those two areas weren't getting the extended treatment. And my other, other comment is kind of a question because I know transportation is getting the full monte here, but so is there a traffic impact report? Gonna be done, Daniel and.
There is. There was a traffic report done earlier last.
It's already done. And it did find that there was relatively a wash between the existing R and D versus all these residential units. It was pretty close. But it's pretty close.
But yes, because again, you're looking at the delta between what's.
I understand, yeah, but obviously that Technology Park has never been fully occupied either. And I guess that's that part of the traffic impact study.
Well, the project is entitled, where certain square.
Versus, okay, yeah. Well, anyway, I just.
Is there any way to revisit, is there any way to revisit the idea of doing a more thorough traffic report than looking at the delta?
Traffic reports are prepared according to certain established procedures. And that's basically how they have to be prepared. Can't force a result.
I wasn't thinking of forcing a result. I was just thinking if there's another kind of traffic report beyond what you've done.
I mean, that's gonna be a function of the EIR, I mean, as far as the VMT analysis.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to thank the public that the comments were excellent, on target, what we were looking for in terms of specificity for things to look into. And I don't have anything to add that we haven't already covered. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So for my comments, I have two. I, in my past life, I used to be a transportation engineer, so I would work with highways and, you know, and so the entrance, the entrance to Highway seventeen northbound is actually pretty long, which gives you an opportunity maybe bypass the Starbucks light, you know, and just have a direct, direct on-ramp to seventeen north, you know, and I don't know if that's something that can be analyzed just from a transportation, a reduction point of view. Because if you're waiting behind the light, behind the light, behind the light, until you can make a turn and then immediate turn onto the on-ramp, you might be able to circumvent that, you know, as a possibility. The other comment I have is, we should think about when this project is gonna finish. Let's say it's go through all the approvals and the EIRs and the schedules I was reading. I think it said twenty thirty-one or twenty, twenty thirty-one, you know. So by then, you know, we should be thinking by then what would really be needed, you know? I mean, we may have, you know, like for example, charging stations because probably people may use more scooters or more electric cars or whatever. So charging infrastructure, you know, by then, maybe even flying cars, I don't know. You know, but, you know, just to be cognizant of the technology. And so those are basically the comments I wanted to provide.
I have one more.
You have one more, okay?
Yeah, I forgot. And it reminded me. The schedule, the schedule for construction is listed and it's three phases. And it goes on for four to five years. I don't, you know, this is the biggest project we've taken a look at. I don't know if that's normal, but, but one phase is to build the houses first and then the next phase is to build another section of whatever, the condos, and then another section of condos. And they're divided up into three phases that spans at least four, maybe five years. Do you look at the implications of having that kind of construction going on for that long? Not only will the neighbors be impacted, but the people who are moving in to the first phase are gonna be impacted by the second phase construction and the first and second phase construction, people are gonna be impacted by the third phase construction. It would seem to me that that's less than ideal, to put it nicely. But is that something that the EIR looks at?
Yeah, we do look at construction impacts to the surrounding community.
And also unless you're willing to loan them the money to build everything at once.
Well, I'm not interested, I'm not interested in the reasons why. I'm just saying it's a long process and there will be people living there, okay, during the construction process. It's next door.
It's a good point.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that. Unless there's anything else.
Can I, so I know a lot of folks are here. I'm just gonna ask the ER consultant, Daniel, to put on the screen. I think that we're still accepting comments. So if you didn't get a chance to speak today and you wanted to send a letter in or, so if you could just speak to.
So you can send an email to that email address listed on the screen, techparkproject@campbellca.gov.
Through February fourteen.
Through February.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody. We have one more. I guess, item on our agenda. Thank you. Nice meeting you.